Where is your sire?
Well, just.
How do we meet you?
Sire.
Sir.
Sire.
Sir.
I thought you were talking to Ken Holm there. Okay, good evening, everybody. Our, uh...
Bring me back the old page.
Well, when you're all ready, we'll get ready to go. Good evening. Our first item on our agenda is a public hearing of the zoning amendment by law 2567. So it's gonna take a couple of seconds to get through that. Then we'll get back into the regular agenda and then we'll get to the public input period, which I think most of you are here for. So it's gonna be a couple of minutes. And if you're here to speak to 25... Sorry. Yeah, 2567, you'll have ample opportunity. So we're gonna start right now. I'd like to call this public hearing to order. Public hearing is being convened pursuant to section 890 of the Local Government Act in order to consider proposed bylaw 2567. At this public hearing, any person present who believes that their interest in property is affected by the proposed bylaw should be given an opportunity to be heard on the matters contained in the proposed bylaw. However, it is important that all who speak at this meeting restrict their remarks to matters contained in the bylaw, and it is my responsibility as chair of this meeting to ensure that all remarks are so restricted. Those of you who wish to speak concerning this proposed bylaw should, at the appropriate time, commence your address to council by clearly stating your name and address. Then you may give us the benefit of your views concerning the proposed bylaw. Members of council may, if they so wish, ask questions of you following your presentation. However, the main function of council members this evening is to listen to the views of the public. It is not the function of council at this public hearing to debate the merits of the proposed bylaw with individual citizens. Everyone who deems their interest in property to be affected shall be given the opportunity to be heard at this meeting. No one will be or should feel discouraged or prevented from making their views known. After this public hearing has concluded, the council may, without further notice, give whatever effect council believes proper to the representations made at this meeting. During the course of a public hearing, people sometimes tend to become too enthusiastic or emotional. Regardless of whether you favor or oppose any particular application or argument, please refrain from applause or other expressions of emotion. Restraint enables others, whose views may or may not coincide with your own, to exercise their right to express their views and enables all views expressed to be heard in as impartial a forum as possible. I'll ask the corporate officer... Or, sorry, the... Ms. Ann Inoue.
Um, your worship, the notice was published in the May 2nd and May 9th editions of the Roslyn News and posted on the city bulletin board and website since April 29th. Staff mailed out or mailed all owners and residents within 100 meters of the proposed rezoning with notice of the proposed bylaw as required by the city bylaw and the local government act. The city has received one written submission regarding this application.
Thank you very much. So I will call for submissions. Is there anyone that wishes to speak to bylaw 2567?
Your worship, we'd like to correct that there was no submission.
There was no submission?
There was no submission.
Thank you. So a second call. Is there anyone that wishes to speak to bylaw 2567? And a third call. Is there anyone that wishes to speak to bylaw 2567? Seeing none, the public hearing is adjourned. Moving right along down to the regular meeting. I'd like to call this meeting to order. The first item on the agenda is a public input period. The reason for the public input period is to give citizens the opportunity to address council with matter of urgency. Uh, please, if you wish to come forward, state your name and, uh, your address, and you have two minutes of our time. So if there's anyone that wishes to speak to the public input period, please come forward. Sure. You can sit, you can stand, whatever you want.
Okay, I'll stand. Um, my name is... Am I addressing everybody? Okay. My name's Julie Pinn, and I live at 1652 Leroy. Um, I'm a landscape gardener in Roslyn, and, um, what I would like to see happen is an area, um, somewhere in, in, in or around Roslyn where we can put, uh, green waste. You'll notice that, um, Christmas trees were put outside the arena, and then following that, there's been a lot of, uh, cuttings and, you know, all kinds of hedge trimmings and things like that. And it... Obviously, there's a need. I think there's a need for this, and, um, I think it, it obviously helps the environment. Um, and it, you know, we in Cootenies like to believe that we're doing good things for the environment. So I don't know, uh, if there's an area that, you know, that we could find that would be, uh, good to do that. I know that there are places where people do put things, but there should... There is no dumping, uh, specified, and yet people still do it. So I would like to see an area where we can, um, put, you know, cuttings and such.
Great. Thank you very much. And just for everybody's knowledge as well, at the public input period, we as council don't debate the merits or whatever. What we get is your input, and then it'll come back to council. So we're not gonna debate that issue, but thank you very much, and it'll come back to council.
And then what happens?
We'll, we'll let you know.
Oh, okay.
Yeah. Anyone else that wishes to address council, public input periods?
Hey, your worship, members of council, I'm here two reasons. One, the primary reason is representing the Board of Esling Park Lodge, and of course, the Board of Esling Park Lodge are just a volunteer organization for the residents of Esling Park Lodge, and I'd like to respond to the, uh, city's request or notification on dealing with the, uh, outstanding mortgage monies that the, uh, Board has that came due with the council and council's motion letter that we received. So having said that, Mayor and council, in response to council's letter and proposal, read the outstanding amount owed to the city by the Senior Housing Society. The Board explored several options that would enable us to comply with the council demands for repayment and encountered several obstacles preventing us from reading the letter, the demands. However, we felt that council's intent is to protect taxpayers and recoup the economic investment council initially made in our seniors, that given some cooperative understanding, our Board can and will comply with that intent. Due to the legal restraint on our ability to raise rents, our only revenue stream, and the hardship on fixed income seniors, we would ask council to consider in, we hope, a positive way, the following proposal. The Board is proposing that $270,000 be considered for the next five years as an investment in our seniors, and the Board will pay the city 2.2% interest annually, $5,940 annually for that five-year period. At the end of the five years, the council will receive $29,700 in interest on that investment, and the Board would then begin paying interest in principal on the mortgage over the next 25 years according to the terms of the city's current proposal with interest rates negotiated reset at the MFA rate. The interest over the first five years is slightly above the current investment rates and is the maximum that we can increase the rents. The five-year period enables the Board to increase our revenue streams without... Within projected government guidelines, and it means gradual rent increases for our tenants that enables them to plan for the increases, and most of our residents are on fixed incomes, and sudden large cost increases can create hardships. We'd like to thank you for considering the proposal, which creates least hardship on our residents. It's within our legal ability to do so, and we feel meets council's objectives. Submitted on behalf of the chairman, Mr. John Harrison, and signed by myself.
Thank you very much, Mr. Frifili. Please, uh, Tracy? Is there anyone else that wishes to address the public input period?
Well, if I may, worship, I have two items, if I could.
Sorry, yeah.
The other item is an independent taxpayer, and I've been following what's happening with our tax dollars, and it appears to me as though the regional district Cootenie-boundary directors have increased their stipends and, uh, by up to 35 to 37%. And I know you now represent us on the Board, your worship, and I think on behalf of myself as taxpayer in Roslyn, Roslyn taxpayers, it would be very useful to get, uh, an exact explanation of how much they've increased it, and I know Roslyn undertook a review, um, by the Auditor General, perhaps, uh, with those kinds of increases in stipends. It's time the regional district would review the same. So I would encourage council to, really on behalf of the citizens of Roslyn, um, if my information is incorrect, your worship, please feel free to tell me, because sometimes it's pretty hard to dig into the books of the regional district. But I think of, you know, I really think it'd be our... The best interest of taxpayers if council looked at that, and at least inform the taxpayers there, because, you know, we're collecting money as a council, giving it to the regional district, and they're looking at 37% increases in their stipends and their, um, other, uh, economic benefits. So, uh, I would encourage council to do so and consider seriously with other municipalities the concept of perhaps getting an audit done of the regional district.
Thank you very much. And as I said, we won't be debating the issue, but I will say that, uh, as a rookie on the regional district, it's been incumbent on me to get some information. I have garnered a whole bunch of information on that, and I'll be providing it to the public forthwith. Oh. Is there anyone else that wishes to address the public input period? Yeah, please come forward.
Um, hi.
We need to know who you are.
Yeah, so my name is Rachel Rusin. This is Eva Cameron, and we're here to briefly introduce Mayor and council to the idea of reconstructing a wetland at North Jubilee Field, which is the area just north of the soccer fields around previous RSS and the community gardens. We are gonna be back in two weeks to give a more in-depth presentation about pursuing a feasibility study on this. Um, the reason that we're interested in pursuing a feasibility study of a wetland in this area is because last year we both took a week-long wetland construction course, and at that point we identified that this area, North Jubilee Field, is in actual fact a wetland, and that's why it's challenging to manage water in this site. And we're both involved with the Roslyn Community Gardens. We watch it throughout the season, and we realized that water really could be managed in a more efficient way and, um, function as a place for inflow and infiltration of stormwater, et cetera, et cetera. Like I said, in two weeks, we'll be back to give you a little bit more detail on this, but we will be asking council's permission to do a feasibility study on a wetland on this site. And we're excited to announce that the B.C. Wildlife Federation will be coming to Roslyn on May 23rd to 25th to do a two-and-a-half-day wetland course, and Eva has a poster about this, and, um, people can register for this two-and-a-half-day workshop on wetland restoration and also identify other wetlands in Roslyn. And on the Saturday night, um, I guess that's May 24th, there's an open house. The whole public is invited to attend to learn about wetland restoration, and we're really excited that North America's top wetland construction expert, Tom Babyhauser... Is that right? He's coming to Roslyn, and he's gonna be looking at the site, and on June 2nd, he's actually gonna be meeting with Darren Elbow and with Stacy to, um, look at this site to see if a wetland is actually possible. So we hope to see you at this event on May 24th. Invite your friends, learn about wetlands, and we'll see you in two weeks. Thank you.
Thank you. Look forward to seeing you in two weeks. Anyone else that wishes to address council, public input period?
I'm Paul Cindi. I just wanna speak to about the notice of a development variance of my neighbors and just the height that it would impede on the view from my property.
Sorry, what bylaws have you... You need to let us know? No?
Sorry?
It's a development variance, your worship.
Oh, yeah, okay.
And the address, is that on Earl Street?
Yeah. And I also own the lot next door on Black Diamond. So this, this would be the view from my house. I don't know if that was included, so, um, I just feel that it's way over the top over what's permitted and would severely, you know, devalue the property as such, so. Otherwise, yeah, that was by only complete. It wasn't in terms of what he's gonna do with it or whatever. It's just the fact that it's just too big and tall.
Great. Thank you very much. Is there anyone else that wishes to address public input period?
Hi.
There's a lot of people out there.
Well, maybe, yeah, can they hear me?
Uh, maybe. If you guys wanna say anything or present...
Go ahead. We'll figure it out.
Come in.
Hi. I'm here representing the Lower Columbia Affordable Housing Society and to urge you to consider the request that you will be seeing tonight, that the council approve, um, requests to include our proposed housing units in the permits of tax exemption bylaw. What this is, is we will be purchasing, uh, affordable housing units and owning and operating them, managing them, and providing them at subsidized rents to develop a cohort of affordable housing units in Roslyn Trail and Fruitvale. And we're requesting that, uh, the property taxes, uh, be, uh, be included in the exemption bylaw so that we can help reduce the cost of this housing. And this housing would be in perpetuity, um, affordable. So that's why I'm here tonight.
Great. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Is there anyone else out there that wishes to address council, the public input period?
Come forward or hold your peace.
Yeah, exactly. Well said. I couldn't have said it better. I'll ask again, is there anyone else that wishes to address public input period? Yes, public input period?
Uh, sure.
Your name, please, and your address would be great.
Sure. Um, my name is Barry McQuaid.
Nice, Barry.
I live on 2291 Elmore. Uh, I just wanted to show up tonight to show support for the decision that Mr. Cosby and Mr. Strachan, uh, mentioned at your last meeting about, uh, the two-year extension for, uh, the construction of the skate park on Washington III. Uh, and I also wanted to mention that there's about half a dozen other people in the hallway also.
Okay, well, if the half doesn't wanna come in and speak, that'd be great, but is that your...
That's it, yeah.
Great. Thank you very much. Anyone else?
Oh, uh, this is Tyler Renter. Uh, I would just also like to speak in, uh, support of, uh, an extension on the time period for the skate park. It's been working hard. Uh, it's been a long process. It'd be a shame to see, uh, it'd be a shame to see time run out without the funding come through on the long line.
Great. Thank you very much. Anyone else that wishes to address public input?
Uh, yeah. Great. Could you get them to speak up, please?
Can you please speak up so Ms. Moore in Arizona can hear you?
All right. Well, um, I'm not sure where the city stands on it, but if, uh...
Sorry. Name your name, please.
Dylan, sorry.
Sorry, Dylan.
Dylan, I'm with the Skate Park Association. Um, if you just go to any park in town, or sorry, in other towns, Castle Garden, Nelson, uh, take a look, there's any given day, kids of all ages on bikes, scooters, you know, but like any kind of moms, dads, everybody enjoys it, so that's all.
Great. Thank you very much.
Dylan, do you have a last name, please?
M-O-R. M-O-R.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Moore. Anyone else that wishes to address council, the public input period? Anyone else? Seeing none, moving right along. Need a motion to adopt the agenda? Move by. Fisher second to buy. Spear discussion on the agenda. Seeing none, all in favor? Opposed, carried. Adoption in minutes. Motion at the minutes of the regular meeting of April 28th, 14th, be adopted. Move by. Spear second to buy. Bachelor, discussion on those minutes. Seeing none, all in favor? Opposed, motion is carried. Letitions and delegations. Uh, maybe we'll just wait till... Thank you all for coming.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. Just give a minute till you all... You can stay until 10:00 if you want. No?
There coffee?
No coffee. Oh, that's it. There, that's better. Anybody else left out there that's looking for a chair? Need a chair? Good? Yeah.
It's a good thing I showed up. Let me count this in the box.
Okay. Everybody happy? The next item on the agenda is delegations. Ms. Deanne Stevens, Executive Director of Tourism Roslyn, delegation, please come forward. And you have, uh, I'd like, if you can, I'd like to keep it 15 minutes if you can, 'cause we have a very long meeting and we're already into it pretty heavy.
I can do 15 minutes.
Okay. We have line anyway, don't we, all right?
Mayor and councilors, thanks for having me, and I promise to be brief. Um, we already received a copy of our, um, report on the shuttle bus. As you probably heard, this was a huge success. It was by far way more successful than I ever anticipated and a bigger project than I ever, ever anticipated as well.
The first button, the second button on the projector. Here, we'll come. Okay. Yep, you got it. Yep. You should find it.
Okay, excellent. So what I wanna do is just go through some of the summary of the findings that you'll also find in the report. So, like I said, it was an amazing success. We transported 19,391 people, passengers, riders, over the course of the winter. So over the four months of the winter, that's how many people, um, we took on the bus, and we know that because every time you guys got on, we, we, we tracked it. 14,222 were residents or seasonal residents, 5,169 were visitors, and we transported an average of 170 passengers per day. We also tracked, because we tracked every time anybody got on, we know exactly what time were the peak periods, and this is great for us because of our planning for next year. So now we can take a look at this and say, okay, great, we need to figure out how we can bring down those peak periods and smooth it out, um, so that we don't ever have any periods when there's too many people on the bus. We also know which days of the week were the most popular. This is kinda interesting, 'cause we would've assumed that weekends were the most popular, and they actually weren't. Um, it was pretty smooth throughout, uh, the course of the week. So why is this important to me? Well, I manage the accommodation revenue and ensure that we continue to drive business to our accommodation partners, of which there are 10 here in Roslyn, uh, but I also work for all of the other businesses at the same time. Um, this was our best winter ever for accommodation revenue. The green line there is the average over the previous six years, um, and then we've got the red line, which is this winter. So January was our biggest month ever for accommodation revenue, and February was our second biggest month ever. We don't have March yet because it's, uh, three months in a row. We also, um, hired a fellow to do a survey, an intercept survey, so that when you got on the bus, we had a few questions to ask people who were riders to try to get a little bit more information about them. Um, so the first question was, is the availability of a shuttle service critical to your decision on which ski resort to visit? Yes. 59% of people said it was a critical part of it, and I think that's part of the reason we saw, uh, greater numbers for accommodation this winter, too. How would you rank our new shuttle bus service? Excellent, 92%. Um, so overwhelmingly positive feedback on it. How important do you think it is that this service continues in future years? So there's actually three questions here, but, um, people voted 97% that it was critical that this should be a priority. This was an interesting one, 'cause there's been a lot of debate about whether or not we should be charging for this bus. And so we asked, uh, the 100 intercept service, would you use this service if it costs $2 a trip? So the interesting part is that they said no, 59%. 59% of people said no. So now, all of a sudden, what we can do is we can figure out how much revenue we would've got had we charged $2. Um, so if we had charged $2, we would've only had 7,950 riders and only $15,900 in revenue. So that's an interesting number, and what that number means is that we can't charge, because if we charge, we're not gonna get enough people on the bus and we're not gonna get enough revenue. So just to, on the other side of it, we brought in $42,000 from businesses who gave us money in order to keep the shuttle free. So we definitely wanna keep this as a free bus for the future. Carbon reduction, so we also calculated the carbon reduction, and we checked this with Aaron Cosby, who does this kind of thing professionally. Um, at the end of the day, there was a total reduction for the whole season of 28.39 tons. So this is a significant reduction for a community of our size and adds to our goal of becoming a sustainable community. We also tracked the, um, police staff, too. So part of our thinking was that this would, um, bring down the number of impaired driving charges in Roslyn. So we've got it over four years, so we haven't got 2014 yet, but it'll be interesting to see, and now we have a way of tracking this going into the future, but it's definitely coming down. So plans for next year. What do we wanna do? What are the most important things? So it's great. Now we've got this data, we can figure out where we need to move people and at what time. Um, so we've done some planning already, and here's the things that we'd like to change and augment for next year. So we'd like to tie in the route and schedule to accommodate students. So in case school District 20 doesn't have a school bus next year, we wanna make sure that we can bring the kids from red and from blackjack into town and, and coordinate that for the kids. Uh, we'd also like to extend the route to Lower Rossum, so we'll be going down to the Cook Avenue pickup there where the kids currently get picked up for school. Uh, we'd also like to extend the route to Blackjack six times per day. So it wouldn't go every time, but it would go six times, 3:00 in the morning and 3:00 in the afternoon. Uh, we also would like to get a larger bus to accommodate, accommodate the increased usage. We were, we were overfull on several, several of the runs, so we wanna be able to ensure that we can accommodate everybody. Um, we also wanna have the bus move continuously through downtown with shorter stops to keep it moving the whole time, so people don't have to sit and wait quite as long. We also wanna replace the 1:30 to 2:30 break with a 12:30 to 1:30 break instead, because we found the 3:00 bus was overfull all the time, so we think if we move it, um, that should help with that problem. So, why am I actually here? Well, we need money for it. So as you know, we were successful in doubling the RMI funding. So now our RMI funding will be about $68,000 a year. So we've done a cash flow forecast, and we can see how much money we're gonna have going into the future. So what we would like to do is have $42,000 per year for the next two years for operations and, if necessary, the purchase of a bus. And tourism in Roslyn will continue to match this with contributions and grants in order to, to have the grant, uh, the bus moving. So in the package as well, so the, the Board unanimously voted in favor of this, and the Board also said that this was the number-one priority for tourism, uh, in the community. Yeah. And that's it.
You went, Tom? Very good. Any questions of Ms. Stevens?
I have a couple of questions.
Okay.
Go ahead. Just wait till we get the lights on here. Okay, go ahead. Yeah, go ahead.
So, that's great that you had 19,000 people, but, but I'm wondering, if 14,000 of them were residents and 5,000 were visitors, are you still gonna have the same amount of support from the business community, 'cause they already reached the residents?
Yeah, I think, uh, I am very confident they all have no problem, uh, reaching out to the business community to support this. Um, I think that the businesses saw an increase of business in not only, uh, residents, but also the visitors. Uh, the restaurants in particular were really happy with this, the restaurants and bars, and a lot of that was locals as well. So I'm confident that we should be able to come up with enough money to run it, um, match money from the RMI, from, not just the RMI, but the matched money that I would come up with.
Okay. And then when do you expect to get those commitments from the business community, again?
I gotta get it done right away, because, um, we, uh, you know, the winter is coming upon us already. I'm already working on all the winter marketing. Kind of funny to think we've finished all summer marketing already and we're on to winter, but we haven't totally finished it. Um, so, yeah, I wanna get it done right away. I want it by the end of June. Checks in my hands.
And, um, that's, that's great to have that information through the carbon reduction, 'cause we can certainly use that in our tariff report for community emissions reduction. So that's super.
Great.
That's not really a question, that's a comment. And then one last thing. I was interested in, this is, you just mentioned it here, but it was also in your board meeting minutes about the discussion with the museum and the RMI funding priorities, and you said your entire board, um, supported this as number-one priority. Did that clue that the museum voted in, in favor of that as well?
Yeah, the museum voted in favor of it as well. The museum still has $56,000 allocated from the RMI, um, and the museum was attendance at the meeting, and they supported it, and they said this was the number-one priority for the community.
Okay, that's great.
Thank you.
Thank you. Good job.
Don't worry, sir.
Yeah, thank you, Dan, for the presentation and the report. Um, same, similar operator, similar bus?
Yeah, well, we went to, uh, we promised that they'd have the first rate of refusal for the contract, so it was part of last year's contract, so we'll offer it to them the contract, so it was part of last year's contract, so we'll offer it to them, and we'll see what they say. But it will depend. If we go to a bigger-sized bus, then our gas costs are going to be higher, and we also have to figure out, it's a different class of license once you go above 24 passengers, I think it is. So, we have to figure that out, too.
Great, thank you very much. I think there's a few challenges. I think one of the challenges that we're all aware of is the RMI funding being, Mel said that they want 70% of it to go into our infrastructure. So, I think that's going to be a challenge, because I think right now, what we do is 42 and 7 is 49. I think we're running about 80% going into shuttles. So, I think that's going to be a challenge for you guys, and I don't want to debate it right now. This will come back to council.
Well, and I think-
But I think it's been a good service, thank you. I think it's been a good service, and I look forward to ways that we can make it sustainable. Thank you very much.
Well, and I think there's, we've got some very creative ways that we can ensure that we meet the top of the operations, and if we were able to work with the province a little bit more closely, then we'd be able to, I think, there's, all of the other communities that I've been speaking with have this similar challenge, and they all have, so they're putting pressure on the province as well, to allow shuttle buses as part of the capital requirements. But we can always buy a bus, and that's capital.
But I think that there are going to be challenges, so I just want to make sure that we're all aware that the sustainability of the free bus is going to require some creative thinking.
Well, we also pay a lot of money in B.C. Transit taxes, and perhaps that that should be the direction that the politicians should be looking towards.
You suggesting we get rid of B.C. Transit?
No, I'm saying we should tell B.C. Transit that this is the service that we would actually like to have.
Counselor Fisher?
I was actually going to ask that question. You know, going down the road, when I see the number of riders on the B.C. Transit service, and the number of riders on this shuttle service that we have, regardless of cost, how at some point, that they could work themselves into this, with Tourism Roslyn, or the city of Roslyn, or a combination of the three. Just because I think, you know, the number of people using it, there were plenty of days that I was up there that you couldn't get on. I mean, it was packed constantly. I mean, I don't know how many, did you ever keep track of the number of people that didn't get on?
Yeah, we did. We know which times, we don't know how many.
Yeah, exactly. I mean, I was there with my family, and there was 20 of us standing there as it was going away. I think it's a great service, actually.
And we do pay, like, about a quarter of a million dollars towards the regional B.C. Transit, so maybe there's, you know-
Well, where's our priority, I guess?
Yeah, what is it that we want them to provide us with as a service?
We keep trying to do inter-municipal links, but then you see the ridership, and it's just not there. Two people, three people, anyway.
Okay, anything further?
Yeah, I was just saying, I heard a lot of great comments about the service all winter, and it was mainly from the local population. Like, they thought it was great, you know, ease the parking up the ski hill, you know, it was great. I see, most of it was from the local population. It would be good if you could get B.C. Transit involved somehow, but that's another debate all-
That's another debate, for sure.
But I was just saying, nothing good for that service.
Anything further, Ms. Stevens? Thank you very much.
Thanks.
Thank you.
Do we have to reload that?
Yeah.
Okay. Our next item on the agenda is delegation from the Innovative Education Task Force of the Sustainability Commission, Amy Short. I don't think I've had the pleasure of meeting her.
Hop over here. So, if you don't mind if I just get my-
No, if you do, whatever's comfortable, that's fine.
Thank you. So, before we turn the lights off, I just wanted to thank the city for hearing me out. I will try and take a brief amount of time as well in my presentation.
We can't hear her very well.
Okay, I'll speak up.
She's about 10 feet away from you.
Thank you.
Is that Kathy?
Yeah.
Okay, Kathy. Can you hear me okay now?
Yeah, that's better, thanks.
Okay, thank you. So, as the mayor said, I'm here with the Innovative Education Task Force. My name is Amy Short, and I've been hired as the new coordinator for the Innovative Education Task Force, who is a subsidiary under the Sustainability Commission. So, the reason I'm here tonight is because we obviously appreciate the funding and the support of the city for this new initiative. And this week is our launch week. It's been about a year in the making, but we're excited to launch it, and of course, we wanted to do it here with you first, and show, I guess, the city what we have, and make sure that you're the first person that we kind of unveil this to, because we'd like your support, and obviously, we want you to think that we're doing a good job. So, I'm going to present this PowerPoint presentation. Can we just get the lights? Is there anything I need to do up here? Okay. So, we have, the name of our new initiative is called the Monashie Institute, and it said here that it's unforgettable learning experiences in the world's coolest mountain towns. And the reason that we think this is really going to work here in Roslyn is because, according to B.C. Tourism, consumers cite that natural environment, the warmth of people, and the diversity of our activities in B.C. are the greatest motivators for traveling here. And basically, that's Roslyn, and in a nutshell, is that we have all those assets to our community. We have a lot of warmth in our community, we have beautiful natural assets here, and we definitely have a spot that tourists want to visit. So, that's one of the greatest motivators. So, if people come to B.C., then we have it, and we have what people want. So, the purpose of our Monashie Institute is that the Innovative Education Task Force was developed as a way to bring into action some of the goals of the Sustainability Commission. And Sustainability Commission wanted to build a more resilient community that was able to adapt to some of the changes on a local, regional, and global level. That doesn't make a lot of sense, Billy, in terms of what does that mean? What is it that last sentence means? Though, if we break it down, this is basically what it means in terms of how we're going to fulfill that goal of the Sustainability Commission. So, our vision is that we want to build a learning hub here in Roslyn that attracts locals and visitors together, and grow a more sustainable community. Our mission is that we want to be an educational epicenter that provides reflective, unique, experiential learning programs, not only just to the residents, not just of Roslyn, but of our region, so that goes to Castle Gar, Trail, the Monashie region, and also to a global audience as well. We want to be that platform that brings attention to these assets that we have here in Roslyn, such as the beautiful mountains and environment, and we also have a lot of brilliant community instructors. We want to attract tourists to our local businesses as well, and our natural assets. So, the challenge could be that tourism is, it requires a lot of development, there's partnerships, and a lot of marketing efforts that we have to make, but we're gaining a lot of ability, making those connections. Tourism B.C. says that a five-year strategy focused on tourism developed in the government of B.C. stressed the need to promote the development of community-level marketing partnerships and coordinated efforts at all levels. So, that's why we're here with the city today. We want your help in this effort. And so, what we're doing is we're reaching out to all different local businesses, we're reaching out to the community. There's a lot of brilliant minds here that have a lot of information and skills to share with the tourists that come into the region. So, we have developed the Monashie Institute as a solution to tourism in our area. It said that during the last decade, the tourism industry grew more rapidly than the B.C. economy as a whole. So, that's quite the statistic. Obviously, it's something that is worth looking into in Roslyn. So, what makes us unique? What advantage do we have here in Roslyn? Well, our main competitive advantage is that we have, obviously, a diversity of experiences that we can provide to people here. There's a lot of natural and human capital that we can use with the backdrop of our beautiful community. So, we're going to use a coordinated community approach, we're going to have personable marketing methods, and we're going to deliver unique educational experiences to people. And we're going to give them a glimpse into the life and the culture that Roslyn has to offer. So, this is our strategy. We're going to connect with visitors and local, and kind of connect with the local knowledge here, the skill providers that we have. We're going to develop resources in the community, and we're going to deliver these educational experiences by having a website that has a variety of different programs that one can register for, maybe workshops, seminars. We could have, I guess, camps, so to speak. And so, we'll be having online registration for people to register for these programs. These will have local talent, whether it's a writer who's hosting a writing camp, maybe it's a local artist. We have, Louise is going to be offering a sketching 101, as she's going through a hike through the local trails. And so, we're going to have lots of recreational opportunities for people to enjoy grapefruit, our amenities, and they're going to be receiving quality instruction, enriching interactions with people in the community, with travelers, with locals. And we're going to be, I guess, giving a model of leadership through our partnership and coordination, perhaps for other communities to follow as well. We'll have programs in permaculture. We have one with Andrew Bennett. We have, I think there's a certificate that would possibly come along with that permaculture program as well. We'll be having leadership and development programs, riding camps, health and wellness retreats. We'll be having mountain biking seminars and tours. We'll have art classes, nomadic entrepreneurship programs in leadership and development, and ecology, eco tours with one of our biologists in the area, studying plant life and things like that in our local, beautiful woods. So, basically, our strategy is that the Monashie Institute wants to be the vehicle that helps develop educational opportunities, so that we can create growth in the edu-tourism industry. We know that tourism is a huge part of B.C., and we want to attract people here. So, basically, the conclusion is that we want to leverage the beauty that Roslyn has to offer. We have a lot of intellectual and artistic teachers in our community. They can offer a lot of experiential education programming that attracts tourists, visitors, and locals together to support our community's sustainability. So, this is the snapshot of our homepage of our website, which is being launched this week. It's the Monashie Institute, which creates learning experiences in the world's coolest mountain community. I think all of us live here because we want to, and we want to attract other people to our town as well. We want to create more economic growth in the city, and obviously, we can have that ability by creating a reason for people to come here. So, if we're able to give them an educational experience that's unlike anything else, where they can go hiking and do art in the middle of a field, or they can also do writing camp, or, you know, combine some things from Roslyn Recreation for their children, and do something for the parents as well, there's lots of things that we can offer them. We're going to cross-promote with a lot of the other organizations here in Roslyn. We've met with our strategic partners, and we are working along with Roslyn Recreation, we're working along with DM and Tourism Roslyn. We've talked to the Ski Academy, we've talked to a lot of businesses in Trail, CAFs, and so, we're working alongside them to kind of cross-promote and promote everyone as a whole. It's not that we want to stand out ourselves, but I think it's about bringing people here together to have cool learning experiences, and hopefully, they want to either come back or maybe move here. So, one of the reasons we're here today is just to launch. We wanted to get the support of the city, and also encourage everyone to come to our open house. We're having it Wednesday, May 21st. Basically, it's welcome to anyone that feels that they could be an instructor, maybe they wanted to offer a yoga and wellness retreat. You, I guess, basic people would sign up on our website, they would register. We take 20% because we're doing the online registrations, we're promoting it through a lot of our social networking, through our newsletter, and through a lot of other organizations. And then, you would get, you know, paid 80% of whatever the registration fees are for all of these events, and you get maybe a larger audience to learn about you and what you do. So, if you want to learn more about how you could get involved, and maybe offer a program with us, or you want to learn about what we're going through offering, then come check out our open house, which is Wednesday, May 21st, and we'll be winding up these there as well for everyone. So, thank you very much for your time, and thank you for helping support this new initiative.
Thank you very much. Can you get the lights on? Okay, thank you very much. Is there any questions from, to Ms. Short? Nope. Thank you very much for the presentation.
Thank you.
So, we're now on item 6A, request for council decision as a wind, engineering services contract. Is a motion that the city, sorry?
The motion was for reconsideration, and we did pass the motion to reconsider.
Yeah.
So, now, this is, are we going to do it or not?
We need a motion to go to the contract, to see if we want to attend it.
Yes.
Is there a mover to that? Moved by Thatcher, seconded by-
I'll second it.
Fisher, seconded it, thank you, Thatcher.
Yeah, I think we've all, we've ordered on this back in February, and I think it was pretty much unanimous that we put this out for 10 years, so that's what we should do.
Counselor Fisher?
Yep.
Good. Counselor Moore?
Uh, no, I'm in favor of this, but it's just proper procedure.
Pardon me? What procedure is that?
She said it's proper.
Oh, it's proper. Oh, sorry, I didn't hear you. Does it spare any net?
No, agreed.
On the motion, all clear. Posed? Motion's carried. Oh, yeah, sorry, Counselor Moore?
Yeah.
We have, yeah, she already said it. Sorry, I'm going to have to, the counselor-in-the-box thing is, you're going to have to-
I know, it's challenging.
I'm going to have to tell you who voted and all that, okay?
Okay.
I request for council decision on the 2013 audit and financial statement resolved. The council approved the 2013 audit and financial statements, is a mover to that. Moved by Fisher, seconded by, spare, discussion. All in favor?
No, I have some comments.
Yeah, okay, go ahead.
Okay. Okay, so, I thought that in this financial statement, we also included, like, the list of contractors that we paid more than $25,000 to, and also that there's the staff salary list that go over the threshold, I think threshold 75,000. Is that not included with this report?
Oh, yeah, Mrs. Butler, or Ms. Butler, sorry.
Your worship, this is just the financial statements. You're referring to the SOFI package, Counselor Moore, and that will be coming on Wednesday morning at 8:00.
That'll come on Wednesday morning at 8:00?
Yeah, that's the SOFI package that includes the financial statements, plus all the other things that you just mentioned. That package will be sent out to you tonight.
Okay, I thought we were, I thought we were adopting the audit and financial statements on Wednesday, then we're doing, am I confused about the order of things? So, we won't have seen them before Wednesday, then, so we won't be able to adopt them as part of the package.
I'm sorry, they're two separate items.
Yeah.
The financial statements are separate, but in the SOFI package, they are included.
Okay, so, in the SOFI package, we're just seeing that for the first time on Wednesday.
That's correct. You're going to need two resolutions, one to adopt the financial statements individually, and then one to adopt the SOFI package, which includes the financial statements plus the other items that you just mentioned.
Okay, except we won't be able to adopt this, because we haven't seen it. Don't we still have to do three reading bonds on that?
Your worship, this is not a bylaw?
Okay.
Okay.
Does that make sense?
Yeah, well, it happens every year.
I'm kind of confused about that, but, also, I'm looking at, oh, I've got a couple of things. I just had a question on page 37, future employee benefits of the 247. In the note for distinguishes between the short term, the already approved, and the long term, estimated discounted to future present value, I'm just wondering, does the 247 include both of those types of benefits?
I'll have to get our CFO to answer that question for you, or our auditor.
Okay.
If you could supply that-
The note broke it out separately, right? But the line item is, is it separate? I just didn't know if that was all the same thing.
Your worship, if there are line item questions, I would prefer that they come via email, so I can vet them through the auditor.
Okay. And then, on page 42, there is an incorrect statement on the Edlin Park loan, and the statement there says the principal of 270 to Edlin Park has been deferred until 2039. We didn't do that. And it also says interest was to be paid at a rate of 172, which we also didn't say that. So, that's not correct. I mean, the motion that we passed, that the principal and interest we pay back in 25 years, and the interest rate was the NFA rate for 25 years, which is 4.18. Now, I know we saw Edlin Park coming forward with another proposal, but in any case, what's in this, the financial statement is incorrect.
Your worship, I will have to have that amended by the auditor.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Because, I mean, we should, at least, we should have it, I mean, if we want to make a separate deal from that, that's one thing, but what this should say is what we actually-
Yeah, that definitely needs to be amended, thank you.
Okay. Um, let's see, let me see if I have anything else on that. Oh, I just wanted to verify, page 45, it mentions long-term, the long-term debt, and it mentions bylaw at 1966, and that there's two parts of it, and I think one is Red Mountain Sewer, one's Red Mountain Water, and then 1983 is Ofer, then 2344 is Columbia, Washington. I just want to verify that that's what those bylaws go to. Can you verify that?
Which, um, I'm not sure which number goes to which, but those are the three bylaws.
So, Red Mountain Wa, the Red Mountain, yeah, the Red Mountain Water and Sewer is 1966, and Ofer, are you, are you saying you don't know which ones those are, or are you saying those aren't?
Let me just look at the taxation bylaws, and I can tell you. 2344 is Ofer.
Oh, 2344 is Ofer.
Yeah.
Oh, okay, all right, I got that wrong. Okay, then what's 1983? See, I thought Columbia, Washington was in there.
I can hear a penderel.
We don't see, yeah, sorry, we don't see 1983. It's here, the issued water treatment plant.
1.1.
1983 is for the water treatment plant? I have a, um... I'm concerned about that bylaw, actually, that number for 1983. I think that might be an incorrect bylaw number. I'm gonna have to have that amended too.
Okay, if you could just maybe let me know by Wednesday morning?
Yeah, for sure.
That'd be great. Thank you. And then, the other thing I noticed on page 47, the pension plan contributions, we paid almost 14,000 more this year than last year, and I'm just wondering why? We're just from paying 154,000 to 168,000.
Your worship, again, I would like these in writing, so that I can vet it through the auditor, because I can't answer them at this meeting.
These are the audited statements, that's right.
Okay. Okay, I'll send you an email.
Thank you.
And, that's it. Thank you.
All right, the motion is that council approves the 13 audited financial statements. I suggest that, subject to the amendment...
Subject to the amendments by the auditor.
You okay with that? You okay with that? All right. Did you hear that, Counselor Moore?
Yep, I'm in favor of that.
Okay, all in favor? One, two, three, four in favor, Counselor Moore?
Yep.
Unanimous. Thank you. Request for council decision, Development Variance Permit Application of 913 Earl Street, from the Planning Assistant. Is there a motion that council approved the Development Variance Permit Application to vary the height requirements for the detached secondary suite above a garage from six meters to 8.6, 2.6 meter variance for the property...
I have a conflict on that one.
Can I finish, please?
Yeah, I'm sorry, sorry.
So do I. I have to finish reading. 2.6 meter variance for the property legally described as lot 2, Section 26 Plan, NE S 211, Land District 26 Township 9A, located at 913 Earl Street. Counselor Moore?
I have a conflict.
Thank you. So, I'm not quite sure how we're gonna do this, because if I hang up...
Well, I'm taking my phone out of my ear and just yell when you're done. Okay?
She just can't be part of the discussion.
Okay. All right, so, is, yeah?
I'm within...
You have a conflict too?
I'm within two lots, so I'm not sure.
You do?
I don't know. Is it the 50-meter rule? Am I not...
Did you get a letter?
Impacts you?
Tell you the truth, I don't know.
It impacts you, not...
It wouldn't impact my...
I know, actually.
Wouldn't impact my views or any, it doesn't impact...
But I don't know that you are. I mean, if you think you are, you have to say that you are.
Yeah, I don't know if I am. It doesn't affect my, my views or my...
Oh, your worship, Counselor Thatcher did not receive a letter, so he's not within that.
Okay, there you go. All righty.
Good.
So you can sit. So is there a mover to that staff recommendation?
Well, move it.
Moved by Speer, seconded by...
I'll second this.
Well, I'll second, so we can discuss.
Thank you. Discussion.
Well, obviously, there is some disapproval by the adjacent homeowner, and I actually meant to get up there and take a look at it, but I didn't get a chance, because, and the pictures aren't bad. You know, it's, you know, it's really, um, you know, kind of a good neighbor kind of a situation, and if it's going to impact somebody's sight lines or their view, or, I mean, we really actually don't have legal power over the view thing, but we do have the, um, you know, to be considerate of others and our neighbors around it. So, you know, if it is going to have a negative impact, and there's another option, I just wonder through your worship to our planner, if there's another option to create a similar kind of a situation for the secondary suite without increasing it by 2.6 meters, the variance, or is this the only option, option here?
Sladeboard.
This is the only option for putting a garage underneath the secondary suite. However, he could leave the secondary suite as it is right now, which is about 4.5 meters, and build a garage somewhere else on his property against the house. He thinks there's more environmental impact to do that, cutting down more trees, more fills required. So on the south side of his property, and you go down the driveway, and it would be to the south, on the opposing property line.
Which is undeveloped lot on that other side, but it's, nonetheless, it's still a lot, buildable lot, correct?
Yeah, both of them are on both sides.
Yeah. Well, environmental impact from the footprint of building something else, yes, that, you know, it's a good argument for trying not to do that, and, and just having one site, but at the same time, if you can still get a garage out of it, if that's the intention, the garage, and the secondary suite is already there, then, you know, I, I do sympathize with the, with the neighbor, right? Because why create a blind spot, or a wall, or whatever, an eyesore, if you don't have to? So, that's all I'll say for now.
Thank you, sir. Thank you. Counselor?
It is quite a large variance. How it's, it's going to impact, I think, about two, two properties, Counselor Moore's and Paul's, but, uh, it's, uh, see, it's a, it's right at the end of the, of the cul-de-sac, and it is tucked up in, up in the, up in the trees. It's not going to impact anybody from the west, just from the north, but, uh, see, it is a large variance. It's a, I know the area, and where he wants to, where he'd want to build a, a new garage on the other side would be, that'd be quite the, quite the job to do, if it would really impact that lot environmentally, so...
Counselor Fisher?
Through you, staff, I'm just looking at the number of variances that we see that are similar to this, and wondering how the recommendation comes forward, based on...
Eric, can you speak up, please?
That's usually not a prob, that's usually not a problem for you and I.
She shouldn't be listening anyway. Sister Barry, she shouldn't be listening anyway to conversations. Excuse me, point of order.
Yes, absolutely, point of order. Counselor Moore, do you hear me?
Sorry.
You're not supposed to be part of this.
I know, I know, I know, I'm not. You know me, I'm interested in everything. I'm not there.
Well, if you, if you can't stay out of it, then I'll just turn the phone off, sorry.
No, no, sorry, sorry.
Okay. Counselor Fisher?
It's hilarious.
Uh, yeah. The conflict isn't appropriate, I guess. I guess the question is, in terms of these variances, uh, we read the bylaws, and from time to time, we vary them. Um, I'm just, and I've gone through where we're, what we're looking at. I'm just trying to understand, um, from a staff's perspective, um, you know, how this makes sense relative to the, um, the actual permit that's required, you know, under the bylaw.
Sladeboard.
Not sure.
Well, how are you recommending this, in other words?
Well, I'm recommending for it. At the time, however, I hadn't received any neighborhood complaints. Mostly, when you look at variances, you look at what the, what the applicant is trying to do, and how it will impact the neighborhood, the environment, and how it will basically improve his, and how it will impact everyone around. So what are the benefits, and what are the loss? At the time, I wrote the report, I recommended for it because it was tucked away in the trees, was set back far from the street, surrounded by mostly green trees, and, and I didn't have any neighborhood complaints. However, there has been a complaint now, so things do change. Height variances are always the most controversial, because they do impact people. Secondary suites above garages, um, that is challenging in our bylaw. We have a six-meter height variance for that, and at the time, staff brought forward the zoning bylaw. We did recommend a seven and a half meter height for a secondary suite above a garage, because it's extremely difficult to build a garage in the secondary suite under six meters. So these variances have come up a fair bit.
And just to follow up to that, in our regular house, um, is 10, isn't it?
Yeah.
Yeah. So somebody could technically, if that was the only house on the property, tear that down, build a house to 10 meters, and, right, okay.
Anything further?
Yeah. So, through you to our planner, Ms. Lightborn, did, were there, was there only one comment from the neighborhood?
Yes.
Okay, further? Can we get the motion read back, please?
The council approved the Development Variance Permit Application to vary the height requirement for a detached secondary suite above a garage from six meters to 8.6 meters, a 2.6 meter variance for the property legally described as...
Yeah, that's okay.
1913 Earl Street.
Right.
Can I ask one question? Sorry, one more?
Yeah, sure, yeah.
So, could this be built without the variance? Could the garage and the secondary suite still exist? No. Have to have that variance in order to build that.
In order to build what you want to hear.
Yeah.
The challenge that was already addressed, the six meters, is pretty hard to do.
Yeah.
Okay, I'm gonna call a question on the motion, all in favor? Opposed? Sorry, all in favor? Opposed?
Moore, oh, no, she hasn't got the vote.
No, she doesn't.
So it's going down.
So the motion was to approve, so the motion's defeated. Okay, Counselor Moore, are you still around? Isn't it you?
No, because he didn't vote.
No.
Are you ready?
It was tied, right?
Yeah.
So the motion fails, because it was not unanimous.
Are you ready?
You voted in favor, you say.
I voted in favor, yes. Yes?
Okay, what happened?
Can't tell you.
You have to read the minutes.
I gotta read that.
You have to read the minutes.
Yes, you do.
Okay.
Go ahead, Tim.
Would we be able to refer that back for some additional information, you know, for citing?
Well, the motion, first of all, the motion failed.
It failed, yeah.
If, uh, there is procedural ways that it can come back, but I think right now, the motion's failed. Okay, uh, zoning bylaw, area, where are we? Counselor, there's a review of the regional district area zoning bylaw from the Planning Assistant. A motion that, and I won't read the whole thing, because it's very lengthy, but counsel recommend the RDKB approval of the bylaw, with the exceptions for the comprehensive development zone listed below. I think this has, this is a result of the regional district redoing their OCP, et cetera. We've already, in the past, made similar recommendations, that these things be included in their bylaw. So this is, quite frankly, nothing earth-shattering. We just want the regional district to understand our concerns with the comprehensive development zone one. Everybody up to speed on that one? And that's the Finley Creek Ranch site, where there were, I can't remember the number of units, but, but anyway, it would affect Roslyn Infrastructure and ta-da, 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 so the regional district should be aware of that. Okay? So is there a mover to that very lengthy resolution written by Ms. Sladeboard?
Yeah.
One, two, three, four. Moved by Fisher, seconded by Thatcher. Discussion? Seeing none, all in favor?
I have some.
Well, let's go.
Okay. Maybe you can't see me waving my hand enthusiastically. Um, okay, so, I'm wondering, you know, I'm, I'm really concerned about the number of homes that could be out there in that Finley Ranch. Is there anything stronger we could do? Like, did we suggest to the RDKB that the Finley Ranch just developed that, we want to incorporate it into the city of Roslyn, or is it... What do we do?
That's a good one. That's a good one.
Well, you know, I mean, then at least we get the tax on it, because this doesn't put a huge burden on Spokane Street, Thompson Street, you know, Davis, all of those, Leroy, all those coming with, all that, you know, is there, is there anything stronger that's a question through the staff, I guess, unless you got...
Well, first of all, it's regional district property, and if we wish to have control over the, total control over the property, you mentioned that we could just perhaps try a boundary expansion, and I don't really think that you want to mention that publicly right at this moment, but, just because I don't, no, I don't, well, Ms. Sladeboard, is there anything else we can do other than recommend?
No, that's the only thing we can do. It's not in our jurisdiction. We can say whatever we want, and they can do whatever they want.
Thank you very much.
Yeah, so ours, it doesn't matter what we say, really, and it looks like we've already said a bunch of things and hasn't necessarily been incorporated into their, their plans, right? Um, yes, I had a, I had a question about trail building, because we talk about tying in trails and whatnot. Does the RDKB have any regulation about trail building, or is that just wishful thinking?
Counselor, I think that's a little outside of what we're trying to do here. I think we're trying to let the regional district know we have concerns with development out there.
Why not?
And we have, and we have trails mentioned in, in our letter to the regional district. I don't know that if the regional district has any bylaws regarding trail building or whatever, that's certainly outside of this. I think what we're trying to do here is tell the regional district that we have some concerns, and that's, as has been explained, that's all we can do. So, I think that's where we're at.
Well, I know. The reason I raised it is because we're saying that we'd like to have, you know, coordination with trail building. I was just curious if they have any regulations about trail building.
Well, we'll have...
I don't know.
We'll have to ask him that question. Because that's, excuse me, because that's outside of what we're dealing with right now. So we, we can ask him that question. Anything further?
Um, yeah, I had a question about the little blue box, the map on page 77, across from Blackjack, across from the highway, it shows a blue box, which is the drinking water resource one. And I'm, I'm just curious, I can't quite figure out from that, is where that is. Is that beyond Phil Johnson's place, or is that Phil Johnson's place?
That, that is Phil Johnson and Rosa Jordan's place.
And Rosa, okay. And how many hectares is that?
I couldn't tell you.
Okay, because, you know, there, in the, in the drinking water one resource area, they say that parcel size is a 50-hector parcel size, so that would, you know, limit the number of residents in that zone, so I was curious about whether that, that is 50 hectares, but of course, there's already, you know, two residents on it anyway. Because that is our, our drinking water, right?
This is regional district, though, right? This, this is regional district. I, there's another reason that maybe you look at, at other options when you want to say, when you say that you want to protect drinking water, but right now, this is a regional district bylaw that they want to pass, an OCP, or bylaw, I guess, and...
Yeah.
And we are making our views known on their bylaw, and that is a courtesy.
I understand that.
And that is a courtesy, and that is...
And that's my question.
And that is a courtesy that, that we are afforded by the regional district.
I know. I accept that. I'm just curious if that parcel is 50 hectares, and how much, how much development could go in that parcel in our watershed?
But Counselor...
I have a question.
Well, I'm sure it is, but we don't have the answer to that, because that's regional district lands. I mean, we can get the answer to that, but we don't have it for this.
Okay, that's fine.
Okay?
I could guesstimate it's less than 50 hectares. Just knowing what I'm gathering.
Yeah, guessing it is too, which is sort of interesting, because there's already two houses in that. But maybe they didn't have that fifty hectare parcel size requirement in their previous OCP.
Okay, Counselor, we're gonna move along, all right? Anything further on the request from the... Or the staff request to present this to the regional district?
I have a question. Through you, your worship, to Ms. Lightburn, is there conversation... Was there conversation about... And we always talk kind of about a buffer zone, right, between regional district and city boundaries of mutual cooperation. Does that conversation go on at all?
Yes, it does. The previous planner was part of the steering committee for the zoning bylaw, and he expressed the city's concerns, so...
Okay.
Yes, so...
Thank you.
Okay, call a question.
I have one last question. I'm just on page ninety-four, the sewage disposal system. Is that just septic, or would they contemplate actually building some sort of sewage treatment in that area?
I don't know that we have the answer to that. How would we have the answer to that?
Well, you know, we've got a planner, they've got a planner, they probably have tall homes, you know, they could talk, I don't know.
Counselor, this is regional district lands, and they are responsible for that. We can get the hold of the regional district and ask these questions, but it's outside of our discussion right now, frankly. I'm gonna call...
Curious thing, I like something.
Well, I know that, and that's great. But I mean, we're at a council meeting, we're trying to get this done, and...
Okay, so the answer is nobody knows. They could build a local treatment plant, or it's all septic. We don't know.
We could fly it to the moon, we have no idea.
Okay, good.
On the question, or on the motion, all in favor? Opposed? Uh, sorry, that's three in favor. Counselor Moore, four in favor?
Yes.
Motion's carried unanimously. Thank you. Question for council decision, the renewal of the miners' hall lease to the Follies Society. Is there a motion that council directs staff to renew the Gold Fever Follies service agreement for three years to provide summer theater to the community in exchange for use of the miners' hall free of charge for fourteen, and that staff negotiate a rental fee with the Follies for fifteen and sixteen? Is there a mover to that? Moved by Spear and seconded by Thatcher. Discussion, Counselor Spear.
No, I think we've had this discussion numerous times at council before around the Follies, their value to the community and having summer theater, and the enhancement of our heritage and our history of our community. So I think they're, you know, it's important. I'm happy to see that... And I know that it's always a fine line for the Follies on whether or not they financially can actually even make and break, being a nonprofit. And so, you know, I think this is an opportunity for them to start to think about being able to pay some kind of rent, but at the same time allowing them that transition time to get that in order over the next year. So I'm in favor of this motion.
Counselor Thatcher.
I think it's important to keep them in Roslin. They put a great show on every year. A lot of locals see them, a lot of tourists enjoy them, so I think it's well worth it.
Counselor Moore?
Yeah, you know, I strongly support the Follies, but they've been on notice since the task force report in two thousand eight that they would need to start paying rent. In fact, in two thousand eight, the plan was they'd start paying five hundred dollars a month, so that would be fifteen hundred for the season, in two thousand nine. And then last year, we said we'd charge five hundred a month this year, right? So, I mean, they should have told last year that rent would start to be accepted, and I'm assuming they probably were, but we did have a motion on that. But, you know, we had a lot of time to work on it, and I'm not sure what efforts they've made. I thought they were actually supposed to start paying something this year. Last year's report, who had... Last year's report recommended that they start paying five hundred dollars in twenty fourteen. So here we are doing the exact same thing again. Now it's twenty fourteen, we're not charging anything, we're saying, oh, in twenty fifteen. It's like we keep booting this down the road. You know, their net income last year was fourteen thousand, they got twenty-five thousand in the bank. You know, my feeling is, you know, you've got to start some... At some point, maybe this year, we charge them five hundred for the summer, not per month. And then next year, they're charged a thousand, the year after, they're charged fifteen hundred. You know, that would... At some point, you have to kind of bite the bullet and say, either, we're never going to charge them anything, or we want to have some, you know, cost recovery. So that's, you know, that's kind of where I am on it, I feel like. And it's hard, because I love them. I think the Follies are fantastic. I have the kids stay in my house all summer, you know, it's great. But we also need to cover some of our costs, and, you know, we're not doing it. So, anyway.
Okay, thank you. Anything further, Counselor?
No, I mean, I'll be voting against the motion to approve it or amend it, but I agree with Counselor Moore that some steps... I mean, we've... Every organization at the city, or that's been funded by the city, has taken a little less this coming season. Every funder has either been frozen or rolled back to some degree. And just even a token amount of five hundred dollars for the season would be just a step. And we're not looking at making money off of the Follies in any way. It's just, at some point, recovering a percentage of the cost, not unlike what we do at the arena or at any other facility that we have.
Thank you. Anything further? On the motion, all in favor? One, two, three. Counselor Moore, three in favor?
No, I'm opposed.
Two against. Motion's carried.
Well, can I ask a question?
On what?
On the Follies.
Well, we've just been through the whole thing. Please...
No, 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 this is just a question about a motion we made in March twenty thirteen.
Please be brief, yes.
I... We had asked for an update of recommendations that the miners' hall task force had made, because I know some of the things have been done, some of them haven't. And I'm just curious when we might see that update. That was a motion we passed March eleventh of twenty thirteen for staff to update us on what we're doing to implement the recommendations.
Staff will be supplying council with a new updated task list. I think we mentioned that at the last meeting, and I'll have that for you by the end of the month, once our public works manager has returned from holidays.
Okay, great, thanks.
Thank you. Roslin Public Library, is there a motion that council grant permission to the library board to renovate the interior of twenty-one eighty Columbia Avenue to include upgrades to washrooms for accessibility, removal of the southeast partition wall, addition of partitioning walls to create new spaces, painting, flooring, and shelving? Is there a mover to that? Moved by Spear and seconded by Thatcher. And go ahead, Counselor Spear.
Well, I have a question. I'm sure that I read that they would be doing the fundraising for this, for these renovations, or could anyone supply with... Is that correct? Okay. So, and then I read something about they might phase it in, which is, I find a little bit worrisome, because I think of construction and the way things go, and you've got a library that's active and open, and you're gonna have some kind of renovations going on at the same time. So the only thing I'd say is that I hope that if they embark on renovations, that they do it efficiently and in a timely fashion, so that doesn't impact the functioning of the actual library on a day-to-day basis. And having said that, I think it's a good idea. I do go in the library often, and it is... It's, you know, the outside looks great from all the things that were done, but it's a little sad inside. So I'm certainly in favor of this, as long as they can raise the money and it could come into fruition, then I think it's a great idea.
Thank you, Counselor Thatcher.
I think it's a good idea. It does need some updating, and say with the fundraising, I don't think they'll be starting with a quarter bit of fundraising nor redone, having funds in the bank, so I don't think there'll be much worry about, you know, drywall, not upper wire, I guess. I don't think they'd start if they didn't have enough money, so...
Counselor Moore?
Oh, yeah, I approve the idea, think that's great. The only thing I'd like to maybe amend the motion is just to... That the city retains the right for final approval of the final plans, just so we see it, because we do own the building. Would the mover accept that amendment?
Yes, I would assume that that would be part of the pro...
Yeah, sorry, go ahead. I'm sorry, I shouldn't have jumped in.
I'm the mover.
I know you are.
No, I don't have a problem with that, unless it's inherent in the motion itself, but the more clarity around the motion, the easier it is for all, so, sure.
Jose, the building inspector, he says he doesn't have any concerns with the proposal, so...
It's true.
He's already looked at, he's looked at the proposal, so I don't... I put my trust in him at the moment.
I don't think we've seen any plans, though, right? They're just talking conceptually.
Oh, sorry, Ms. Butler, go ahead.
Your worship, they're presenting their plans at our next meeting on May the twenty-sixth, and then we can give them our full approval, if you wish to then.
Did you hear that?
No, I didn't hear it.
The plans are represented to council on the twenty-sixth as a delegation.
Oh, great, so we do get to approve them.
And that's in the report.
Okay.
Thank you. Anything further?
All right, listen.
Anything further? On the original motion, all in favor? Opposed? Sorry, four in favor, Counselor Moore?
Yes, I'm in favor.
And that's unanimous. Roslin Skate Park Association, is there a motion that council dedicate the southeast corner of Emcon Yard for a skate park for an additional two years until December twenty sixteen, in order for the Roslin Skate Park Association to explore further funding opportunities? Moved by Fisher, seconded by Spear. Discussion, Counselor Fisher.
No, I think give them enough time to find the dough and let's go.
Okay, Counselor Thatcher. Or, sorry, it was...
Okay, sorry. No, I mean, this has been going on for, you know, a number of years now, and council, you know, we went through the whole discussion and dialogue and looking at different sites, and this, the Emcon site seems to be the most appropriate site within our community. The association sent out... The Skate Park Association sent out the plans yet again, the design plans, and they look great, and it's all exciting, and I really hope that they get to their financial goals soon, so that we can see that come into fruition in the near future.
Great. Anything further? On the motion, all in favor? Four in favor, Counselor Moore?
Yep.
Motion's carried.
So was it worth it?
Very good. That was well worth it.
No, I cleared the place.
Corrections are coming up, too.
Do you have a whole lot of people in the gallery for the skate park?
Yeah, pretty full.
Turn on the TV.
We have a Roslin here tonight.
Okay.
Really?
Yeah.
Okay, council decision, reciprocal facility use proposal from Service Summit Center for Learning Recreation Department resolved that council agreed to enter reciprocal rule with Seventh Summit Center for Learning. Is there a mover to that?
I will move it.
Moved by Spear and seconded by...
It's a queen of moving.
I'll second it.
Counselor Moore, Counselor?
So, Seventh Summit Center for Learning, the independent school that's trying to keep grades eight to twelve alive and well in Roslin, B.C., after...
Hey, Jill, I can't hear you very well.
Okay, sorry. I was being rhetorical, that's why.
Yeah.
So I said that the Seventh Summit Center for Learning School, independent school in our community, which was the result of the decision by the school board, as we all know, a year ago, to move our high school students to trail, is now in need of recreational space. And because of an agreement that the school board made with the sale of McLean Elementary School to the Frankphone School with a clause that said they were not allowed to rent any recreational space to the independent school, the Seventh Summit Center for Learning has found themselves in a very difficult position, because they have no recreational play areas, fields for their students. So, this is what this reciprocal agreement apparently is intended to try and find some space for them via our spaces that we have in the city of Roslin, be it the arena, be it the playing fields, et cetera. So, yeah. What are we gonna say? I mean, you know, it's an agreement that we, at the city of Roslin, get to use the Seventh Summit Center for Learning in the summers as a recreational space, which, whoever the report came from, the rep department, I imagine, has said that that space could be used in the summer months. So I never knew we needed that space until I read the report. So, anyway, that's all I'm gonna say for right now.
Counselor Moore?
Oh, yeah, I mean, I want to support this, but I agree with the proposal, but I'd like to see the rep department come up with other uses for the city-owned facility. I mean, they're moving activities from one city-owned facility to another, but I wasn't... I didn't really get the sense in the report why the camp activities that are currently offered are gonna be more appropriate in Seventh Summit. I mean, the space seems smaller. I mean, I'll go with their judgment on it, but to me, to make this really make sense, the rep department then needs to come up with other programs and things that they could offer, so that we have... That we can take advantage of this extra space, not just move from one building that we own to one that we don't own, right? That doesn't... That doesn't quite resonate, but I'm willing to let this... Give this a try and see how it goes, and hopefully, the rep department will come up with new programs to take and put in the arena lounge. The other thing, they talked about some potential renters that have been turned away from the arena lounge. I'm just curious, who's been turned away? Who wants to use that space and for what? Do we know?
Your worship, I do not know that. Sorry.
Okay. Okay, that's okay. That's it.
Thank you, Counselor.
But I, you know, I support it, because I think it supports the new thing.
Thank you, Counselor Fisher.
I don't particularly support the report as it's written, and I'll be voting against the motion. I don't really see the... I don't see it, and I think that it's... That there are enough holes in it that it's not complete, and if they want to bring it back, that's fine, but I'll be voting against it.
Thank you, Counselor.
Yeah, I didn't realize we needed more space for summer programs. And I've never heard of anybody wanting to rent their curling... Or the arena lounge for summer months. I look at the field, you know, they could book the fields, you know, softball field or their soccer field. You know, I'm for that, but giving them skating and hockey and curling rink for no charge, I think that's just going a little too far. I know they need some facilities or some area for physical education, but, you know, we're putting that cost back on the taxpayers, too, where we are... Where we do have... Where we are paying school taxes already. I think there might be some backlash from other people, if they gave them free hockey and free skating and free curling.
Okay, thank you. Well, I'm... I'll speak against it as well, because I think that what we do here is we now have a program down the hill called the Trail Residency Program, where they charge some people more than others for using the same facilities. And I don't think that we should set a precedent in Roslin for allowing some people to use recreational facilities for zero, and others that have to pay, and these would be children. I think if the Seventh Summit needs recreational facilities, I think that it's up to them to find them, and I think that if we, the city, need more space for recreational program, it's up to us to find them. And I think that, regardless of the facility that is the arena, it's our facility, and we have to make use of our facilities. So I speak against the motion, Counselor Spear.
Well, firstly, when the kids from RSS go to... Or in the past, McLean School go to the arena during the week to skate, they don't... We don't pay... They don't pay anything. And they can play hockey there, and they don't pay anything. So just for clarification, it's not like the kids from the school, the public school, are traipsing over there and handing over a tuna every time they go. That's not the case, no. It's absolutely shock about free. And so, as part of a service to the community, of which the kids live in, of which their parents pay taxes, of which is the same situation for those kids at the learning center, on the most part. They're local Roslin kids. They've chosen to stay in our community, to go to school, and, you know, maybe, you know, there's some other reasons for not wanting them to use the parks and the facilities, but I know for a fact that the parks and the arena and most of the facilities in Roslin are underutilized, so I would be encouraging more people to use them, so future councils don't have to make further hard decisions on facilities. So I'm in favor of it.
Counselor Moore, did you want to rebut or speak again to the motion?
Uh, no, I'm still... I'm with Counselor Spear. I support it.
So...
Okay, any...
Go ahead.
Well, rather than, than this, this motion being defeated here now, which potentially it could be, I would like to make a motion and tell me if I'm on order, to refer it back to staff for further information and clarification through a deeper and more detailed report back to council so we could have a little bit greater discussion about some of the details.
Motion to refer takes precedence, and you second her?
I'll second it.
Second it, on that motion to refer, all in favor. One, two, three, opposed.
Did you count me as four?
No, no, I counted you four and I, no, you're four, we're good, motion carries.
I'd like to see the reciprocal agreement with the, the school district twenty, 'cause it might, I didn't realize we had a reciprocal agreement with school district twenty, so I'd like to, I'd like to see that.
A reciprocal agreement, in the, in the kids?
Yeah, there was something-
Your worship, we do that, that's why we use the RSSF gym for free for recreational activities.
Okay, I'd like, yeah.
Okay, I'll get that, that'll come in, uh, with the referral motion. A request from the Lower Columbia Affordable Housing Society that council approve a request to include proposed housing units in the permissive tax exemption bylaw. Is there a mover to that?
I'll move that.
Second it. Spear, discussion more.
Okay, um, they're asking for a tax exemption on two to three units in Rosslyn. I had a couple of emails with Ms. Morton that get some questions answered, and, um, there's about two hundred and seventeen, um, families in Rosslyn that are in housing need, which is under, um, twenty thousand dollars income is what they call, they categorize that. Um, the thing that was important to me is that the, the fact that their low incomes have to be in their contract, I don't want it to be one of these things where, you know, they, we offer this, we give a tax exemption and then people end up moving in, aren't actually in need, but they assured me that they do have, um, the form they're gonna use has very strict language about financial need, and what they're targeting are people that are the one-fifth of the average income, so they're, they're quite, it's quite low. Um, and also, there's the thing, an interesting thing which I didn't know, that, that Ms. Morton pointed out, was that many people in this category worked in the hospitality industry, which is important to our community, so it's another reason to, you know, to support it. Um, the other thing that I talked to her about, that I said that we look at our permissive tax exemptions on a year-by-year basis, and she said that, I'm just gonna read it, 'cause it's from an email, she says, "Well, I recognize that Rosslyn has protocol about permissive tax exemptions, if approval is year-by-year, it will have an impact on the budget permitted by B.C. Housing. They allow us to budget for exemptions based on actual approval. If it's year-by-year, it may have an impact on the number of units we can purchase and afford to operate. Other communities have gone for more years." So I think that's something we might wanna think about, maybe we don't wanna go crazy. She was saying, you know, "Yeah, we're trying to get ten years, but, you know, maybe instead of one year, we could do, you know, three years." Um, well, let's see, anything else? Okay, so, no, that's, that's really it.
Ms. Butler?
I'd just like to, I'd just like to have it, have it for five years.
Okay, so then that would be, we have to add that to the motion then, no?
Your worship, no, that would be added at the permissive tax exemption.
Okay, we got her. All right, Counselor Spear.
Uh, through you, your worship, to our Deputy C.A., have we, we've already passed the permissive tax exemption bylaw for this year, no? No?
Yes, but these, these units will not be bought until this year, so it'll all take place next year.
It'll take place next year. And we can have, um, we can amend that bylaw to include a longer period of time for this to-
Yes, we can at that time when we adopt that bylaw.
Okay.
So I guess it's, it's the intent right now, Counselor, is that what it is?
Yeah, no, I think it's, it's great, it's really exciting to see this whole program go from, you know, them gathering data and just getting this rolling out to actually being in a position where they've got the grants to, you know, to, to buy these places to, to help out people who need affordable housing. It's very exciting, and I think that we could help out by having, having the, the tax exemption bylaw, um, applied to those, those units.
Counselor.
Oh, see, they're looking at, what, two or three houses, I think it said there. Um, we do have families in need in Rosslyn, and I think it'd be great to try to keep them in town if we can, and if this is the only way to do it, I think it's, it's worth, worth seeking.
Counselor Fisher?
Let me go first. I think it's important that we all understand, I mean, we just talked about the Goldfever Follies and revenue there, and giving up that revenue, and we're giving up some serious revenue here, and I think, while I agree that there's a need, I'm not certain that this is the way to fulfill that need, and I know that I'm on the, uh, on the minority here and that's fine, but I just think that we all should be aware that, uh, there's some significant monies here involved.
I guess my point is, is I read the reports and I disagree with some of the reporting that I don't, I don't necessarily see the same need, um, and while people are underhoused or don't have the same type of housing that they should have, the definition of what people should have, um, I sound, I sound like Scrooge. I actually sound, I can't believe I'm saying this, but the reality is that, um, that in our region, we have some extremely affordable housing when you can compare us to the rest of Canada. And having said that, while people might be underhoused, I guess is the term that they're using, um, I don't think that there's a lack of housing, so I don't think that, that those same people can't find places to actually live. I think there are other, uh, social issues that we have, um, in our region, like other communities do, that are, uh, probably more important to tackle, and not, and I'm not trying to minimize this issue at all, and I know that it pulls at the heartstrings of a lot of people, um, and I have to say, as a young person, I was, um, and the reason this is pretty close to me is that, as a young person, our family, um, went through some times when we had very little, and my mother and father, um, managed to do everything possible to keep us in housing, but it was pretty close, um, and I thought it made us, um, a stronger family, and so when I look at this stuff, um, I think that, uh, that those struggles by creating a support mechanism, um, doesn't necessarily, uh, benefit people, I don't think. Uh, and that might be hard for some people to hear, but it's just a bit of a philosophy that I have. So I'll be voting against this motion.
Thank you, anything further?
Well, I'd like to just comment. Yeah, and, and, you know, I mean, you know, fair enough, um, you know, and there's probably more of us around this table that could speak to, you know, growing up in situations that were maybe not the most pleasant, and in my mind, um, it's not like we're giving a gift away and these people are gonna take advantage of it, I think it's a matter of creating a housing stock that, you know, what your opinion is about, you know, affordable housing and what the, you know, what the, the study has shown, and, um, is that obviously, you know, there is a need, so I'm going by what the, you know, the report says and the information there and the presentations that we've had here, and the fact that, to me, to be able to help less fortunate people in a way that spreads it, you know, over all of the whole community, and we all bear a little bit of that responsibility, to me, that's the right thing to do, in my mind, as a Canadian and as a citizen in general.
Can I make one last comment?
Yeah.
Yeah, um, you know, the, the lower, the, the Lower Columbia Affordable Housing Task Force, they are, they are looking in Trail, Rosslyn, Warfield, Montrose, Crute Vale, that's the area they're covering, and the other, the communities that are participating, you know, with the permissive tax exemption, that's, that's where they're gonna buy those units, 'cause they're trying to make the best decisions they can and get, and do, do the best they can with the money that they're getting for this project, right? So if, if we don't do this, they just won't look for units in Rosslyn. It won't be that they don't do units, they will do units, that they won't be in our community. So that's, you know, that's something to, something to consider, and we have people in our community who are, who are in need, and it can, I agree with Counselor Spear, it would be nice to, to keep them in the community, so.
Great, I think it's important, if we look at their report, that we see that the type of rental households in housing need, eighty, I'm sorry, sixty-five percent is one-person families, only eighteen, eighteen percent are lone parents. So and I, I, sorry, I didn't get the numbers of what that number of eighteen percent is, I didn't get the number, but I think, well, I, I concur with Counselor Fisher a bit that, uh, you know, we have to be careful what we're doing here, and, uh, you know, if we don't have three houses in Rosslyn, uh, because we aren't giving them, we aren't giving them tax exemptions, that's, that's a terrible thing. However, uh, we sit around this table and discuss money in, in every, every ounce of minute detail, and, uh, you know, what is, is there a benefit to, and that's devil's advocate, I guess, but is there a benefit to, uh, having housing that doesn't pay tax?
Well, the benefit is that we have the people, you know, the people, you don't just look at the houses.
Counselor, I'll get to you in a minute. Counselor Spear.
Well, I was just gonna say, you know, there's other, there's lots of, you know, situations on the tax, um, the permissive tax exemption bylaw where you, you know, maybe our personal beliefs don't believe that we should be giving tax exemptions to, um, religious institutions or whatever, right? So we can debate this till the cows come home, right? But we give those, I mean, I could go through that list and I could say, no, they should pay, no, they should pay, yes, they should pay, et cetera, et cetera. Um, so this is a living, current need that I think is quite exciting, and, and it can always be looked at, again, for sure, just like the others are, but, um, there are others there that I, I would, uh, say are, are, are less, um, um, less ma, no, I'm not, that's it, that's all.
No, no, I know, but I think we know what you're saying.
Yeah, you know what I'm saying.
Counselor Thatcher, you wanna?
That's fine.
Counselor Moore, your last remark, please.
Nope, I'm good.
Okay, on the motion, all in favor. Counselor Moore, two in favor.
I'm in favor.
Three, opposed, motion's carried. Information items, motion to receive the information items and act on them as suggested, subject to discussions, is there a mover to that first of all? Move by. Thatcher, second by. Sorry, Fisher, I can only look one way. All right, items.
Uh, C.
Or maybe L.
C.
L.
Notice he's reading them off first.
Oh, yeah, that's good.
C and L, uh, carry.
No, no.
Uh, I just-
We talked about a bunch of those already.
Yeah, I just have one, which is the, it's... I'll think about it in a minute, it's the one with, uh, June eleventh, Cooney Columbia Learning Center, that is, aye. Okay, C.
Wait, can I add some?
Oh, sorry.
Yeah, F, M, and N.
F, M.
Mother and no mother?
And N.
Uh, Franch, mother and no mother.
Okay.
C, Thatcher. Well, they're asking to get, there's five hundred dollars apparently donated by an American that used the Rosslyn Park a few years ago, and that, and that's what they're asking, that's what they're asking for, so.
Pardon?
To release it, yeah. Yeah, to release it to, uh, that park is in need of quite a bit of work, so I think if, uh, if that's possible, if we could release that money to them to put into that park, I think it'd be good, good for the-
Okay, and that's, that is the recommendation, right?
Yeah.
Okay, anything more on, uh, C? F, Counselor Moore?
Uh, yeah, I just had a question, I think it's just a clarification, on the minutes say that there's five thousand dollars allocated to the Heritage Commission, and that the RDKD allocated thirteen thousand five hundred for the cemetery, and farther down, it says the city allocated ten thousand for the cemetery. I thought the thirteen thousand five hundred was the whole amount of the cemetery from RDKD, did, did we actually allocate ten thousand dollars from the city to the cemetery?
No, the money we got, or the money the Heritage Commission got to restore the cemetery was from the regional district.
That's right, so I think they, they, their limits need to be corrected, um, because it looks like we're giving, look, if they come back and say, hey, but, you know, you're supposed to give us ten thousand dollars, it's like we, we weren't.
Yeah, no, we got it.
Thank you, we'll amend those.
Okay, thank you.
Aye, that's me, imagine that. Uh, graduation ceremony, uh, Wednesday, June eleventh, I cannot make it, I need someone to go.
What day in the week is that?
It's a Wednesday.
A Wednesday, I could probably do it, unless somebody else wants to.
No, I'd go, but I can't, 'cause I'm looking.
Okay, you're in.
Okay.
And staff, you'll send that, 'cause we have to advise them by the fifteenth. L.
I lost my notes on that one, but, uh, I was, I was curious, the last council meeting I was, I was absent, I think there was a, a presentation on Trail Little League, was that passed?
Tim, can you please speak up, please?
Yeah, that was. Okay, I was just wondering if the, at the last council meeting I was absent from, there was a, uh, application from the Trail Little League, uh, for exemption for the Trail, uh, Little Leaguers, and I was just wondering if that was approved?
Yeah.
It was?
Mm-hmm.
Oh, yeah, I wasn't, I wasn't sure, and, uh, so you're all good with this?
Is this, is this another, is this a local girls' team or a-
Yeah, Trail Girls Softball.
Oh.
Same thing, only female.
Yes, right.
Okay. Uh, tennis courts, with M.
Okay, that's me, or does somebody else have that?
No, you did.
Okay, um, well, I mean, it says the term is listed for one year, and here we are in May, and then it's got a term expiring on October thirty-one of twenty fourteen, and I'm wondering, is, was that what it was meant to be, or was that just a title?
Your worship, that's what it was meant to be, because we're going into our new application process for community support, so they'll have to follow that policy.
Okay.
You get that?
Okay, yeah, I got that, and then the last, huh, no, wait a minute, now, let me do that last sentence, there was some really awkward sentence in there that, I'm not even quite sure what it was, okay, on, um, page two-two-seven, item part three, uh, paragraph three, the last sentence there says, "The operating grants shall be deemed to be a fee for services provided to the citizens of Rosslyn by the society in the operation and maintenance of the courts." And it, I mean, isn't the three thousand grants for the society for them to provide operation and maintenance of the courts, but I just, I don't get why it's talking about the citizens of Rosslyn there, it just seems, it's not a grant to the, for the, the citizens of Rosslyn, right? It's a grant for the society.
We're reading.
I think we need to take out the two. Fee for services provided, uh, just, okay, I'll change the wording on that, I see what you're saying.
Yeah, yeah, it just seems sort of muddled, thank you, otherwise it's fine.
The intent, the intent is that the society provide the service to the citizens of Rosslyn, that is the intent of the line.
Okay.
Okay, thank you. Any more on M? Counselor Moore. N.
Oh, wait, N, okay, N is a no mother.
That's it.
Um, this is Tourism Rosslyn, um, minutes, and I just, this has just made me think, we were talking about getting service agreements with all our groups, and I'm just wondering, um, if we're gonna try and have a service agreement with Tourism Rosslyn this year?
Your worship, that is still to be negotiated, um, their idea of what they want in a service agreement is quite different than I think what we're thinking. They want an agreement to do just with MRI funds, not with the whole process.
We, we need to work on it, how's that?
Okay, well, so they should, we should probably have them present something to council and we can talk about it with them, right?
They're dealing at the staff level right now.
Okay.
Can I jump in?
Yeah.
So, I mean, Tourism Rosslyn gets funding.
Yeah.
That's correct.
I don't think that's, not negotiable, I think we send them an agreement and they either sign it or they don't sign it, and then they don't get funding or they do, I mean, we talked about having agreements in place, I think if everybody's got agreements in place, we write one up, we send it over. I would, uh, I'd make a motion to that if, if anybody would second it.
I don't need that motion.
I like the agreement idea.
Okay, well, it's-
I think that they're, they're, they're looking for an agreement, just like everybody else.
Right, but I would say that we have agreements already, and all I'm saying is, is that there would be deliverables in, within those agreements that we, we would set the terms of. It's not negotiable, I mean, you're giving the money, when you're giving the money, you write the contract, and when you have, write the contract, if they don't wanna sign it, then they don't get the money, that's pretty simple.
And your worship, that is the intent of our new policy as well.
No, I know, I'm just saying, if the tennis club is doing an interim agreement, then Tourism Rosslyn should do the same.
Right, I think without going into full-blown motion, unless you want, but I think that's the intent of staff, and I think we should, if we can work cooperatively with them, I think that might be a good way to go, but certainly you're, uh-
You can make a motion?
No, you can, if you want, it's fine with me.
I will, I'll wait for another meeting and see how it goes.
Okay, thank you.
Sorry, Kathy.
So, it, it's okay, but I just wanna make one comment on that, I mean, we're dealing with a lot of, I mean, not, not specifically Tourism Rosslyn, there are volunteers involved there, but a lot of these groups, there are volunteers that we need to value, and I value their input, if we send out an agreement to them and they have issue with it for one reason or another, I want them to feel they can come back and talk to us and actually- and talk to us and actually negotiate, I don't wanna feel like I take it or leave it when we're talking to these various groups, we do terrific benefits, you know, provide terrific benefit to the community, so, yeah, you know, I think we need to be careful there.
Can I just jump in with you?
Yeah.
Kathy?
Please, come on down, everyone's great.
You're probably by the pool, aren't you?
No, I'm not, I'm in a really hot room.
So, here, here's my experience, when I was with Community Futures and WD funded us, I didn't get to negotiate, they just sent us a contract and said, here's what your deliverables are, and if you don't wanna do it, then don't sign the contract and don't take the money. And we, we also get, as a city, provincial money with the same sort of thing, the agreement is pre-done and it says, here is what you have to do for this money, and here is the reporting that has to be done. All I'm saying is, is that at a municipal level, we should be at the same standard, we, I don't think, I just, I, I mean, I would much rather have the, the discussion within council on what our requirements to funding proponents would be, um, coming from us, rather than sit down and negotiate every one of these with every one of these groups. I mean, obviously, um, we're gonna have some input from people, but I think that across the board, the agreements have to be super similar, so that we're treating all the groups fairly and equally.
Yeah, I agree, I agree with you there.
And the only way, and the only way to do that is for us to be in control of the contract, I mean, you can't treat the tennis society a whole lot differently than Tourism Roslin, and you can't treat what XYZ society, the, the skateboarders, that much different either, I mean, everybody has to be treated the same, I think, so...
There's a lot of basic things that can be, but every group offers different services and they bring different things to the table, so it can't, it's not just a boilerplate, I mean, I, I, you know, I think this is a really interesting discussion, and I'd love to see, you know, like, but maybe, I think your point there is good, if we, council should take a look at what we're suggesting in the, and, you know, in the agreement, maybe even before it goes to Tourism Roslin, I don't know.
Well, I think staff's working on it right now, and it'll come back and we'll have a discussion about it, and...
I'll, I'll...
Go ahead.
I'll hold, I'll hold off making a motion, but that's just, my feeling is, is that those agreements need to be boilerplate with one section that has, you know, some, some, maybe one section that has a variable, uh, level of deliverable within it, based on what that group does.
Okay, great, so, the motion on the information items, all in favor. Four in favor, Counselor Moore?
Yes, I'm in favor.
Motion's carried, bylaws. Uh, zoning amendment bylaw secondary suite, resolved by law 2567, be read for the third time, is a remover to that. Move by Thatcher, seconded by Speer.
I'll second it.
Speer, discussion?
No, I think it was, I don't know, been there, done that, yeah.
Speer?
No, your worship, we should also be asking for adoption tonight on this as well, since we've had the public hearing.
Okay, we'll get that in a second. Further discussion on third reading? On that, all in favor? Opposed, oh, sorry, all in favor, four in favor, Counselor?
I'm in favor.
Carried unanimously, a motion now that by law 2567, by law, zoning amendment by law 2014-3, be adopted, move by. Thatcher, seconded by, uh, Fisher, discussion? All in favor? Four in favor, Counselor Moore?
Yep.
Motion's carried unanimously. A motion that by law 2569 to 14 municipal tax rate by law be read for the first, second, and third time, is a remover to that.
Which one am I, oh, move to the tax, yeah.
Yeah, move to the tax rate. Move by Fisher, seconded by Speer, discussion, Fisher?
No.
Speer?
No.
Moore?
No.
No.
On the motion, all in favor? Four in favor, Counselor Moore?
Yeah, I'm in favor too.
Motion's carried unanimously. Uh, council decision on, uh, 2014 Red Mountain specified area tax rate bylaw, number 2570, is there a motion that by law 2570, 2014 Red Mountain specified area tax rate bylaw be read for the first, second, and third time, move by. Speer, seconded by Thatcher. Discussion, Speer?
No.
Counselor Thatcher?
No.
Counselor Moore?
Yeah, I've got a couple of questions, uh, what were the fees last year?
Has it changed?
Do we know? Have they gone up or have they gone down? Probably gone down, but I'm just curious.
I'll be able to answer that for you tomorrow, I'll have to look up the bylaw.
Okay, yeah, it'd just be nice to know where we're, where we're going on that.
Okay, so on that, okay, on that motion, all in favor? Uh, four in favor, Counselor Moore?
Yep.
Motion's carried unanimously, are you, uh, what?
Yeah, I can't vote on Ofer Creek.
Yeah, go ahead.
Might have to fix that.
Scrabble it? Oh, not bad.
Okay, council decision on Ofer Reservoir Local Service Parcel Tax, is a motion that by law 2571, 2014 Ofer Reservoir Local Service Parcel Tax by law be read for the first, second, and third time, move by. Thatcher, seconded by, Speer, discussion, Thatcher?
Nope, I don't have any.
Speer?
No, I'm just curious about any changes that way with that, but I'll let the corporate office and let that out.
Okay, uh, Moore?
Yeah, I'm still curious, you know, what it was last year, and then just the general comment, which I've made before, is that, um, it's really, it's really hard for us to do first, second, third on all of these bylaws, but I understand the time sensitivity to get the report in, it seems like always something, hopefully next year won't be this way, whoever's here.
Yeah, I, I agree totally. On the motion, all in favor? Three in favor, Counselor Moore?
Yep.
Motion's carried unanimously. Okay, uh, if we can just take a...
The positive thing is that we're getting things on in time this year, or as last year, we were saying.
Yeah, we take a brief, uh, recess for, for comfort, appreciate it.
Sure, I'm gonna record.
Are we in recess?
Hmm, just briefly, yeah, you are in recess.
Pass that motion of that illegal bylaw, Ofer Creek?
No, you have to wait for the minute.
It is illegal. Just look back on it, all you gotta do is a little research. But that'll be for another time.
That will be for another era.
It is illegal. You're gonna have to look in, yeah. Oh, well, originally, Ofer Creek, the, way back when, was proposed as supporting fire flow to the community, and then later on, as development came, it became sort of expeditiously put in, through as, uh, a way to get it, or to take it, or by developers, but if you look back at the original reports... Yeah, or fire.
Are we, are they gonna come to council over?
Not necessarily, just from the development, from the development.
But, no, but aren't...
Thank you very much.
I'm figuring out, it should just be the same ground. We're back. Members' reports, you know, Counselor Moore?
Okay, um, thank you, uh, a couple things, um, now that the AGLG report is public, I'd like to request that staff, um, make a monthly report on progress of our action plan, maybe that can be incorporated into the task list that we're, um, gonna be seeing soon, because those, you know, we, we specify some specific actions that we'd like to take, and I wanna make sure those get actually, you know, done.
Yep, they'll be done, we have, we have heads nodding here 100 miles an hour.
Ah, that's great, uh, also, I found it kind of interesting note that the only contract that the auditor general found for ISL was the one that Mike Peturo managed, the construction management contract that was the 265 one, it's a bit of irony there. Um, the other thing, the AGLG offered a bunch of suggestions, like, in their Exhibit 7, and we didn't actually go to that level of detail in our action plan, but I'd like to see those things adopted by staff and council, and maybe if people just sort of review it, um, except Exhibit 7 was the capital planning and procurement process from their report, I'd like to see that sort of incorporated into our standard operating procedure, do I need to make a motion for that?
Uh, I think what we would have to do is get, is, I certainly don't have that in front of me right now, and I don't think anyone does, so I, we need, uh, you know, we...
Need to look at it, right, okay.
We would need to have a look at it, for sure, I mean...
A notice of motion would be fine at this time, but, um, to bring that...
Yeah, did you get that, if you wanna make a notice of motion, that's fine, but we can't vote on a motion right now without all the details, it's impossible.
Okay, how about if I make the motion that staff be directed to, um, let's see, to bring Exhibit 7, Capital Planning and Procurement Process from the AGLG's report, uh, to a, to an agenda, an upcoming agenda for us to discuss it, would that work?
Well, I mean, we need to know what the time involved in that is, so that we can do the agenda, I think a notice of motion would be better myself.
Okay, okay, I'll do a notice of motion.
So, you wanted to send one in, or do you wanna make it now?
Uh, let's see, okay, I'll make a, let's see, a notice of motion will be that staff be directed to incorporate the steps in Exhibit 7, Capital Planning, I'll send this in, but Capital Planning and Procurement Process from the AGLG's report, uh, into our standard operating procedures, that's my notice of motion.
Okay, and that'll come, that'll come back next meeting.
Yeah, and then if staff would add in that exhibit, so we know what we're talking about, that'd be great.
Well, yeah, that's...
Okay.
So, the notice of motion will come to the next meeting, and we'll vote on the motion when we have some information.
Perfect, along that same line, the AGLG Perspective Series, they talk about capital project planning, procurement, they had their 26 questions, I don't know if everybody looked at those, but I'd like us to, to discuss it, learn from it, and that should be linked on our website too, so I don't know if that could be on a future agenda.
Well, it's...
I'll make, I'll make the motion that staff be directed to include a discussion of the AGLG Perspective Series, Capital Project Planning and Procurement, on a future agenda.
What would the discussion be, what, what are you trying to achieve, we're not just gonna have a discussion if we're gonna get to something?
I want us to actually look at the 26 questions that they ask in that thing, 'cause they, they offer suggestions and, and, you know, it, it goes back to the same thing, like, there's some specific stuff there that maybe we could learn from, or maybe we wanna incorporate into how we do business, so... I just think, I mean, we, you know, we have all this stuff, but we get it, but then we never talk about it, like, I think we, I think we would benefit from a discussion of it.
Is that a motion?
Well, I think you...
Is that gonna go as a notice of motion?
You have to make a notice of motion to that effect, I think, Counselor, 'cause again...
Okay.
It's a huge amount of information.
How about if I just do that with the, with the other one and I'll send it in?
Sure.
I'll send it in to Tracy, that's easier.
Okay, and then, and then notice will come to the next meeting, right?
Okay.
Thank you.
Sounds fun.
What, can I make a comment?
Yeah.
Why, why don't we just, I mean, just, why don't we just, uh, why don't we strike a committee, just a suggestion, um, and make Counselor Moore the, the, uh, the, a main person on that committee, and, um, and just work with, and rather than just staff reporting back, she worked with staff and a couple of other counselors, and they report back to the, to, um, council on progress on the, uh, on the, uh, on the AGLG, uh, action plan that we've agreed to follow. And the, and the reason I suggest that is that she seems to have the most keen awareness of this and was a big proponent of the AGLG, um, coming out this way, and that, that might vet some of the, suggestions might get discussed in committee first, and knock down some of the, uh, work that's being pushed on staff, not that we shouldn't address all the points in the action plan, but if as a council, instead of keep saying, could staff do this, could staff do that, if we had a committee of counselors that then worked with the staff and saw what kind of work they were going through, um, to get this stuff done, uh, we would take more ownership in it, I think that's, and I'd be prepared to make that motion, Counselor Moore, and I'd be prepared to sit on the committee with you, if you like.
Yeah, I think that sounds great, great idea.
And then we don't, and then we're not putting it on, totally all the work on the staff.
Yeah, no, that's great.
But that's up to the, that's up to the council.
My, my, what I was talking about was having council discuss which of these things we wanted to go with, but I'm, I'm perfectly happy to do what you said, I think it's really great, I like it, more, more proactive, I'm good with that.
So, I don't know where we're at, ever, it, just a second, I think that we're gonna get a motion, we're in members' reports, right, so, I think that we're gonna get a motion to that effect, and I'm happy with, to let that go, that's fine, and, yeah, and so, Carrie, if you're, Counselor Fisher, if you wanna make that motion, then go right ahead, and we'll get it duly seconded, and then we can form the committee.
Okay, it's just a simple report, a simple motion that says, um, I move that we strike a committee, um, to, um, be in charge of addressing the action plan, um, to the AGL report.
Okay, seconded by.
I'll second it.
Counselor Moore, now, uh, first of all, yeah, I think you've already spoke to it, so it's good, yeah?
Yeah, no, I think that makes good sense, also, um, I guess my only query or, um, question around would be, you know, we've always done things as a committee of the whole, because that's how it's always been done, and I'm not, well, that's not true, because we've had small committees doing other things too, um, but I just wonder how many people should be on that committee, and I would suggest more than two, maybe three, um...
I think as many as want to sit on it, that's all.
And I guess the other, my other, um, yeah, as many as want to sit on it, but if it's gonna be everybody, then it's committee of the whole, right?
Yeah, but it's...
That's not the intention.
But it doesn't have to be called a committee of the whole, it can be a committee, it's fine, committee of council, that happens all the time.
Yeah.
I think it's probably not a bad idea, but I'd just like to ask a question through you to staff, it, would, you think this would place more work burden on, on staff, or do you think it would ease the burden?
I think it all depends on how it was put together, and I'd sort of...
I don't think we should, we can put more workload on our staff at the moment, uh, so, I'd like to hear, I'd like your response from staff.
I think, your worship, if it works the same as, um, when we put our grant policy together, that went really well, um, I think that it can work fine, I mean, we would run, we would wanna run our policies that we're bringing forward through the committee first, and then when we bring them to council, they would have the committee support. I was just saying that if it ran similar to our committee that we had when we did our grant application for community groups, if it ran similar to that, where we could bring, um, draft policies forward to the committee first before bringing them to council, then I think it could work really well.
Okay, I'm not gonna beat this up, 'cause it's in members' reports, yeah?
Um, well, I was just gonna add that perhaps that it would lessen the, the workforce staff, because you're working from both sides of it, and I think it could be a really, a really good, uh, exercise in moving us forward and, and, and that, and that greater balance of council and staff relationship.
Okay, so, on the motion, first of all, all in favor? Three, four in favor, Counselor Moore?
Yep, I'm in.
Okay, so, I would ask, uh, Counselor Fisher, if he wants to take the bow by the horns, and, uh...
He wants Counselor Moore to take it.
Or Counselor Moore, sorry, I don't care whom, but someone has to say, yes, I'll take the bow by the horns, and, uh...
Well, I'm happy to do it.
Yeah, we know that, and come up with, uh, you know, how, what you wanna do, how you wanna do it, right? And who, and who wishes to, uh, sit on it, quite frankly, you can maybe count me out, but, that's fine, no, that's fine, but anyway, so, Counselor Moore, we'll leave it up to you, uh, when are you back in town?
I'm back on the 24th.
Okay, so, all right?
But I'm available by phone and email, so, that's good.
Just email me.
Yeah, we'll set something up via email, please send it to everybody, including Tracy.
Okay, is there, is there anybody else that wants to volunteer besides Counselor Fisher and myself?
I'm thinking of it.
Send the email out, you'll get the answers, that's the best way.
Okay.
Okay, thank you. All right, that was Counselor Moore, we're still in your, uh, members' reports.
I'm done.
Counselor Fisher?
I only have one thing, it's sort of, uh, uh, what do you wanna say, a bit amusing, but it was just something that I did, um, late Sunday afternoon, just because I had some discussions, and I've brought this up before with, um, with just some people from Roslin, some citizens, actually, people that kind of stopped me, uh, to talk about things from time to time, and, and so what I did was I drove around, um, I drove up to Fruitvale, and Montrose, and Trail, and Warfield, and, uh, and we, we all know this building. Fruitvale, and Montrose, and Trail, and Warfield, and, uh, and we, we all know this building, right? So, this is circa nineteen sixty-two, got new wallpaper in nineteen seventy-five, got the toilets changed out in nineteen ninety-nine, or whatever it was. And I went to Trail, and there's, you know, all kinds of problems with their building and Montrose, and, I mean, just the buildings are just, all the city halls are old and decrepit, and a few years ago, um, Trail, um, was musing about the idea of having a new city hall, and the uproar in the community was outrageous, I mean, people were totally against it, spending money, that's frivolous taxpayers' money spending and all this stuff. And I'm sure if I put a motion forward today that said that we needed a five million dollar building, because we, every time we try to have a meeting in here, we have people standing in the halls and they can't actually see us, and our equipment is antiquated and works, you know, probably seventy percent of the time, and that's probably because of luck more than anything. But then I drove by the regional district building, and this building is fantastic, and it has a conference center and everything else, and just recently got fitted with geothermal, um, to the tune of half a million dollars or more. And the only reason that I'm bringing this up is that I feel that there's a hu, a giant disconnect in all of our communities, and we've never, ever undertaken any kind of, um, while, while we all sit on regional district committees and, and, and parts of the government as groups, we don't actually ever ask the question, where does the money go? We don't actually ask the question. And so, um, in another motion at another council, and I'll send it off to Tracy, I'd like to do a comparison of these, all these communities with all their antiquated buildings from nineteen sixty, um, and look at the population size of our area, and compare that to a city with a similar population size in a rural area, and look at what we're paying for government. And I think that, I already know the answer, but I think we're, we need as a larger community to do a study on this, because I can tell you right now, if we would've put geothermal here in this building for five hundred thousand dollars, or two hundred and fifty thousand, there would've been riots in the streets, and there would've been people lined up in here screaming, and there wasn't one article in any of our local papers about, is that really a good use of taxpayers' money? And that's our money. So that's my one thing, and I, and the reason that I'm bringing that up is, it was a Trail citizen that asked, that was talking about their city hall, and I had another citizen talking to me about the sewer issue with the, with the bridge, and that was from Rosslyn. And so with all of that going on, that's why I went for the little drive, and I was actually considering taking pictures of it, and, but I think the press has gotta do a job on this. Go around, take a picture of all those buildings, and then take a picture of the regional district building, and ask where the taxes go. I mean, really, at the end of the day, and I'm not trying to defer any kind of discussion or anything about that, it just seems to me for seventeen thousand people, that here we are, I'm sitting in an oak chair with a seat that somebody gave, that somebody donated to the city hall, and I'm grinding about people with, you know, I'm grinding about all these small groups like the Follies and, and, uh, people at the skate park and all this stuff, and we grind away for five hundred bucks here and there, and that's happening over there, and I, and you know what, if, if we were, all these councils, if we were any good at all, we would get together right away and do something about it. And, uh, I'm gonna start making some phone calls down the hill and to everyone else, 'cause I'm, I'm really tired of it, and I'm tired of having to defend a system that I don't understand, and it doesn't work. It doesn't work anymore. We need, we need to do something about it, and we need to do it now, and I don't have a motion for it, and I'll put one together, and I'll extend it to all the other city councils, and if we don't do something about it, shame on us. It's the biggest problem that we have in this region today.
We'll just stay with members' reports, unless you wanna talk about that?
Well, I was gonna respond a little bit.
No, go ahead, I've got so much information sitting in my thing here right now.
Yeah, I mean, I think we have had, we have had indirect conversations many times, as long as I've been sitting around this table for nine years or whatever, indirectly, you know, whether it was through the fire services study, and, you know, we look at the numbers, and the numbers are there, it's not that we don't have the numbers in their financial plan, we've got the numbers, and I think we all realize the cost of government is exorbitant, and I'm not sure if you're alluding to the fact that, you know, a regional municipality, you know, is, is more, um, in the, in, in the liking of a, of a, of a small region like we have, that's been brought up many times, right, but has anyone ever embarked upon it to make a change? Um, not that I know of anyways, I know there's been conversations about regional municipalities out in the community, or a municipal, um, uh, regional municipality, and, you know, really, we have a lot of government, we all know that, right, but then there's other people who take the other side, that if you're not looking after your own turf, so to speak, then, you know, it can be much more, it can be much more inefficient than even having all these little governments. So there's, 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 uh, both sides to, to that debate for sure, but, um, you go for it and, and the motion to council.
We're not gonna debate that right now.
I'll be seconding it for you.
Okay, Carrie, is that?
Counselor?
Me. Okay, I don't have too much, 'cause the chamber never sent me an email about their last, uh, their last meeting, so I stopped Dan Eller on the street, who's the president, and said, okay, did you guys forget about me? Well, yeah, I guess we did. So anyway, I will catch up with them. Um, Rusty downtown has been the talk of the town, at least since it's been, uh, he's been situated, um, I'm not sure about those wood blocks from the Youth Action Network, um, sitting out there, but I, I don't think that they're doing great service to our, um, public art downtown. Sashi Rusty, I don't know if he needs friends or not. Anyway, it's great to see that public art out there and, and adding to our downtown core. Um, I had a few things about the AGLG report as well, and how we're gonna move forward with that, but Counselor Moore covered that, so I don't need to, and I think that's all I have, yeah.
Counselor?
Oh, just a couple things from museum, there's a couple events coming up this month, uh, there's an author coming in called Walter Vavlosik, he's, uh, got a book called The Green Necklace, Vision Quest of Edward Mount, this Edward Mount, he was a, his legacy was creating green spaces in the city. That's, uh, May twenty-four, six-thirty at the museum, uh, May thirty-first, family day from ten till three, there's gonna be a barbecue and blacksmithing and all that kinda stuff up at the museum. And the other thing I was gonna bring up, I was down in Silver City on the weekend of the parade and that, and it's mentioned to me a couple times, that Black of Roslin's representation in the parade, so, I think it's, I think it's important that we should have some type of representation in their, our other local communities, and, you know, we expect them to show up for our, our events, so, whenever these, we get these invitations, we should be making some type of effort to, to represent ourselves. That's it.
Go ahead.
Well, I just comment on that, because, um, we, we, we could do better at that, for sure. Um, I know years ago, we went out to the May Days out at Montrose and attended that, and I think what happens is a lot of us, um, are involved with sports on the weekend or other activities that we're committed to on the weekend, so, um, yeah, I, I'm sure that it's noticeable that we're, we're not attending the Silver City Days Parade, and maybe if we made more effort, they'd make more effort for the Golden City Days.
I think it's just, it just helps to give better communications or better relationships between the communities, even being so little, but I think it's, it's worth an effort.
I'm just trying to think how many years I've been on council and how many times I've gone to the Trail Parade, and it's been a while.
Yeah.
Yeah, I was able to, there's Council Guard, there's Warfield, there's Beer Valley Meadies.
Anyway, maybe we could spend seventy thousand on a float like Trail Day.
Maybe we could talk about, maybe we could talk about pipes while we're in the parade.
That's what we should've done, is put some bridge parts on there.
As long as it runs by Silver.
Over over here next to it.
Not sparring.
Anyway, we're, we're done that.
Our own tree would plant.
We're over that, I, I don't know, there's a couple more coming up, uh, May seventeenth is, next one is Creston, and I can't go to Creston, but...
You give the car and the dog, and I'll go to Creston.
Oh, yeah, well, you, you won't like the dog very much.
I'll take my own dog.
Okay, is that all, Thatcher, we're gonna move along here.
Yes, yeah.
Okay, just the one thing, and I don't think you gotta go, because it's got nothing to do with you, but there's a charity golf tournament coming up, and it's Jump Start, which is a charity put on by Kane Tire, that charity is, uses its funds to help kids to participate in sport they can't afford it. So what I'd like, I think I, do I still have?
You have discretionary.
So I have discretionary, so I am going to, on behalf of City Roslin, sponsor two hundred dollar hole at Jump Start, just so you know.
And what, and what does it go to? That's, that's, um, that's for children?
So is this something that I should be looking at, or what is this?
No, that's the letter.
Oh, that's the letter, oh, okay, yeah, well, I already read it, so, that's it, so that's, I don't need a motion, because that's in my discretionary fund, so I'm just gonna do that, so you all know.
Just wanna make sure we have a quorum on Wednesday morning, please.
Yes.
And what do we do?
Wednesday morning at eight, well, you can phone in.
I can phone in.
We could make a motion, Greg, we could make a motion, and then it would be supportive of all of council.
Well, that's fine, but I'll do it on behalf of council anyway.
Yeah, okay, well, it's a good cause, good work.
Yeah, thanks. So anyway, for Wednesday morning at eight AM, Counselor Moore, are you, can you phone in or something?
Yes, I can.
Okay, and you can phone in on, just phone in on, on itself, right?
How long is that?
And we can just turn it on speaker, right?
Yeah, well, I'll, I'll come in just like I am now, right, we'll be at chambers.
Yes, yes, Counselor, you're fine there. Can you name?
Yeah, I'm coming up, I shift all, all stuff.
Okay, there, we have a quorum.
Can you make it, first call?
Yeah, at eight, how, how long are we taking?
Five minutes?
Five minutes.
Oh, yeah.
Okay, so we got that quorum, all right, everybody happy? All right.
If I remember.